I call to order the April 25th, 2022 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to silence your cell phones and electronic devices. So that people are familiar, Blue Jeans does offer ADA compliance with transcription and translations, and there should be instructions for how to access those services on the CPS webpage. Ms. Wagner, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Moffett?
Here.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Here.
President Lindy?
Here. Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will remain open for your requests for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you would like a direct response to any questions you may have. So we're going to move to our Item B on our agenda, which is our three-month board priorities. Rob, if you can share that slide, please. So this board has committed that for the time period up until the 13th of June, there are four most important items that we're trying to make sure happen and move forward. The first is that we help the new superintendent get off to a strong start, which means a couple of specific things. We've helped with relationship building both internally and externally, and that we're on schedule to have measurable goals informed by her assessment of the district by July 1st. That's number one. Number two, that we've supported the passage of a strong FY22 budget, excuse me, 23 budget, that is certainly a positive against the five-year forecast, has been informed by a sense of what's, not a sense, but an analysis of what's making a difference for students, and then has involved meaningful stakeholder feedback. We talked a bit about that at our last meeting. Third, we've adopted a strong transportation plan for next school year that includes clear outcomes and also has been meaningfully informed by the community. We're going to hear about that tonight. And that we begin a governance coaching series. We've been hard at work at that, and I'm hoping that I can have a date out to board members in the next two days for when we'll have that first training happening. So I wanted to share these here because I think we want to be clear on what matters most, and we want to align our time to those things that matter most. I shared at our last meeting that through the first month or so of this time period, about 44% of our time was spent on these four things, which I think is meaningful, and we want to try to get that over 50 over these last several weeks. And then, you know, lastly, just in terms of why this matters, I think I hope that as a board, we can talk even more in the coming weeks and months about student outcomes and moving student outcomes forward. And I do believe that a board that can get clear on its priorities and execute on them stands the best shot of moving things forward for students. In this last few years, it's been, I think, a hard time with, you know, student outcomes dropping everywhere because of COVID. But student outcomes dropping particularly for low-income students, and here in CPS, I share a few numbers with folks. The Sycamore proficiency rates dropped from 88% to 76% across the first two years of COVID. That's 88 to 76%. But in CPS, the outcomes dropped from 47% to 26%. So 46%, excuse me, 47% to 26% during COVID. And I say that just because we have a lot of really important work to do for children. I'm excited about the commitment of this board to our priorities and the work that's happening in the next administration, and we have a lot of very important work to do. So with that, we're going to move to Item C on Hearing of the Public. Each speaker will have tonight two minutes, and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Once a request to speak has been granted, you'll be invited to enter. This is for our virtual folks. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you'd like a direct response. This request is consistent with board protocol, and we appreciate your help. In the unusual event that someone is not willing to follow this protocol, we do reserve the right to end that person's time. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, if you are virtual, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Finally, we ask that your public commentary be respectful to all listeners. Thank you very much. We do have several people with us here in person tonight, and we're going to start with them. I'm going to read three people's names. The first one is going to be Ayana Page, but if Bella Gordo and Ruth DeBono could also come down, they will be next. Thank you very much.
Ready now, start now?
Ready when you are. Thank you very much.
Greetings and peace. My name is Ayana Page, and I'm titled as a paraprofessional or instructor's assistant. I've worked in this position for 17 years at North Avondale Montessori. The reason I'm speaking today to you all is more recently I felt compelled to advocate about paraprofessional pay, especially in light of substitute and teacher shortages. Assistants are often asked to perform in the way of a head elementary school educator's role. And with Montessori's curriculum, there are three grade levels in one class. In my case, first, second, and third graders. It is $2 on the hour called monitor's pay when an assistant acts as a teacher, which seems to be not sufficient. Assistants come in annually below the poverty level. During this year's summer scholars program, many assistants may serve in the role of the head instructor due to shortages like last year, and the pay isn't sufficient. Due to your preparation, your duties, responsibilities, academic goals that need to be met throughout the year and in summer, Montessori assistants often go above and beyond the duties' expectation. And as an assistant, we are trying to ensure high-level quality learning experiences for our future. The children, paraprofessional hourly rate should increase as well as monitor pay. Kentucky recently passed legislation to make high school graduates eligible for substitute positions. I understand the lack of benefits that are associated with that as a substitute, medical benefits, et cetera.
Thank you very much.
All right.
We're going to hear next from Bella, please.
Hello, my name is Bella Gordo, and I'm from the Young Activist Coalition. Per usual, today I'm going to be discussing the removal of school resource officers from CPS and implementation of restorative justice policies. I'm going to especially focus on why SROs are not compatible with restorative justice policies that we have seen starting to become a part of this district school. SROs are not compatible with restorative justice mostly because they are put in schools and mostly aim to criminalize our children that we have in place in schools. And if we were to remove this role from SROs, the criminalization, students do not deserve to be met with the realities of the legal justice system that seek to criminalize and punish people, especially people of color. Students deserve to see counselors, therapists, and teachers of color who can be proactive role models for them. And in CPS, we need to see more teachers of color and counselors and therapists that will heal students and direct them towards what healing and justice really looks like. And SROs do not serve that purpose within our schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As Ruth DeBono comes up, I want to read our next two, which are the last two in-person folks that I have. After Ms. DeBono is going to be Mo Cambraun and then Glenda Smith.
Hi, my name is Ruth DeBono. I am a senior at Walnut Hills High School and a member of the Young Activist Coalition, a youth-led activism group in Cincinnati. We've been speaking at board meetings for over the past over 18 months, asking that punitive discipline be replaced with restorative and transformative justice policies. The goal of restorative and transformative justice is to create an environment where students are invited to learn and grow, not to be punished for normal childhood behavior. In December of 2020, the board passed the anti-racism policy. And just a few weeks ago, many school board members spoke against the language of House Bill 616, which would prevent diversity, equity, and inclusion lessons, along with many other things in our schools. The board has said things that demonstrate that they care about Black and Brown students in our schools, but by keeping police in our schools, you are not showing this in your actions. SROs or school police are first and foremost police, and the things they do in our schools act directly against the goals of restorative and transformative justice, as Bella said. We cannot create anti-racist schools or successfully implement restorative and transformative justice policies while police officers did exacerbate the school-to-prison pipeline, which disproportionately affects Black students and other marginalized groups by unnecessarily entering them into the criminal legal system and then increases their likelihood in being entered into the system again in the future. We cannot create safe schools when that is something that the police officers are doing in our schools. Furthermore, the actions that SROs do that can be seen as good for our students, such as forming great relationships with students, as many of them do, could be very easily replaced by having other mentors in our schools, or as Bella said, Black teachers and Black role models in our schools for our children in our schools that are not police officers, and more counselors and social workers, and all of those types of things that can truly create a safe and welcoming environment for our children to grow in that does not have the presence of police officers who, whether we like it or not, are there to criminalize our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeBono. Next, we're going to hear from Mo Cambraun, followed by Glenda Smith.
Hello, my name is Mo Cambraun, and I'm speaking today from the Young Activist Coalition of Cincinnati in the fight for police removal from schools and the implementation of restorative practices. Restorative justice seeks to correct and repair the harm created by misbehavior through communication, trust, flexibility, and understanding. I hope that the board replaces the current harmful system of punitive justice that has not been found to decrease misbehavior with a system of restorative justice that has been found to be effective. The key difference between these two practices is that one simply punishes students for misbehavior and funnels them into the school-to-prison pipeline, while the other shows students the harm that their actions created and how to best resolve it with all involved parties. In addition, restorative justice is not compatible with school police. We're placed in schools to resolve conflict through arrests, restraint, court referral, or their general presence. They also reflect the punitive carceral system that is in direct conflict with restorative justice. If CPS were to implement restorative justice practices, it would be in line with districts across the country, such as Chicago, New York City, Buffalo, Oakland, and Milwaukee, that practice restorative justice in their schools with great success. No student in this district should feel as though they are unworthy of healing or the support of their school community. As you mentioned previously, you are very focused on improving student outcomes. Students cannot improve outcomes if they're being arrested and funneled into the school-to-prison pipeline. Thank you for your time, and I hope that the board will take action to implement these policies swiftly.
Thank you, Ms. Cambraun. We're going to hear from Glenda Smith.
Hi, my name is Glenda Smith, and I'm so proud of these young people. I'm running for Hamilton County Juvenile Court Judge, and I'm running because Hamilton County Juvenile Court is 30 years behind the rest of the country and 12 years behind the rest of Ohio in juvenile justice reforms that reduce juvenile violence, reduce racial and ethnic disparity, and reduce juvenile profiling, or racial profiling, while keeping the community safe. I've seen the impact of these reforms. One such reform is before the Ohio State Legislature House Bill 500. It is to abolish mandatory bind over. Mandatory bind over occurs when a youth commits certain crimes and probable cause is found, and they're automatically bound over to adult court. We know that that youth bound over to adult court has a 38% chance, more of a chance of committing another crime than a youth who stays in the juvenile system and commits that same crime. If you'd like more information about House Bill 500 or any of the reforms that I'm talking about, and some of the reforms these young people are talking about, go to glendaforjudge.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Do we have any folks online this evening?
Yes, we have three speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Sally Grimes, followed by Jason Munzel, followed by Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Grimes.
Thank you, Dan. Can you see me and hear me?
Yes.
We sure can.
All right. Thank you. Hello, board members. It's nice to see you all, and hello to everybody watching tonight's meeting. My name is Sally Grimes, and I'm the Executive Director of Activities Beyond the Classroom. I've also been a proud CPS parent for the last 12 years. I'm joining you tonight to invite everybody listening to an exciting event next weekend, the CPS International Jazz Festival. The festival features over 100 student musicians from Cincinnati public schools performing with internationally and locally famous jazz musicians. This completely free event is Saturday, May 7th at 7:00 PM at the Aaronoff Center for the Arts. Enjoy special performances by the CPS Elementary Jazz Academy Orchestra, CPS Junior High School Jazz Academy Combo, CPS High School Jazz Academy Orchestra, and the CPS Jazz Academy Faculty Ensemble. In addition, nine tri-state professional jazz artists and an internationally acclaimed musician, Joan Chamorro from Barcelona, Spain, will be onstage throughout the evening. Join us on May 7th to celebrate our amazingly talented student musicians and to support music education in CPS. You can find event details on our website at www.abcincy.org. That's A-B-C-C-I-N-C-Y dot O-R-G. Thank you, and I hope to see you there.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jason Munzel, followed by Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Mr. Munzel.
Hi, I'm also with Young Activist Coalition, and I wanted to urge you guys to remove SROs from schools. Students deserve to feel safe and at home in their schools and shouldn't be worried about possible arrest or referral to law enforcement. SROs are incompatible with restorative justice as they're an integral part of the criminal legal system, and children should not be exposed to them. Restorative justice cannot properly function when police are an option for punishing students. We need to, we need like healing and community building for these students instead of punishment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is DFT President Julie Sellers.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so happy to hear about that jazz concert. I will tell you, I heard them at the Cincinnati's Holiday, and they were absolutely fantastic. And everyone should go out to see the Citywide Jazz Band. But what I am speaking about this evening is I do have some real concerns for next year's staffing. I'm confused by the presentation at the last board meeting by the Quality Improvement Manager, and that he stated that after doing many QI run charts, they were able to get to have zero vacancies. I'm not, I couldn't understand exactly what his point was of that and where he was talking about those vacancies. But that seemed really off to me, and I may be completely confused by what he was saying. But it was a red flag. In fact, for teachers, there are, at this point, after the transfer rounds have occurred, there's 252 teacher vacancies, teacher vacancies. And there are hundreds of more vacancies for paras, security, and other staffing that is necessary for our schools to operate properly. And some of this should be a red flag to the board, and you should possibly be asking, why are there so many vacancies? There are some schools who have zero, one, or two vacancies, but there are other schools that have 19, 15, 12, 11, 10, 9 vacancies, and they're not in the largest schools. And so I want to know, why are some schools having so many vacancies that no one wants to go to that school? And I feel that it is a cultural problem within the school. And I am not going to say the names of those schools because I don't want to identify any school negatively, but any school board member can contact me to find out, why do some of these schools have so many vacancies? And what is going to be in place that we have the proper staffing that our schools will have everyone that they need by the beginning of the school year? There are tons of math positions, and what are we going to do about making sure that we're filling those positions? That we have not had active job fairs. We've had a couple of job fairs, but they have not been that well-attended because, as you know, there's a shortage of teachers, not just in Cincinnati or Hamilton County, but statewide and countrywide. So we need to think about, what are we going to do to make sure our students have the highest-quality teachers in front of them in every classroom as we begin the next school year? So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I think, Mr. Helling, is it our last speaker? Okay, so we're going to move from Item C to Item D on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes for the last few board meetings. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the Special Meeting, April 11th, and the Business Meeting, April 11th.
Don't move.
We have a motion from Mr. Morosky. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Craig. Is there any discussion?
So I have some discussion about some of the items that are in the board.
We're doing committee reports next. This is the minutes from the April 11th?
It was from April 11th.
Go ahead.
No. Can I add something?
Yeah, please.
I think what you're referencing might fall under, just the following.
Okay, I can read.
I mean, I could be wrong. I don't want to presume to know what you're going to say.
Let me go to where my questions are. Because I just have a couple of questions specifically around the minutes. We were sent a zip file, and it was for, it was all of the April 11th minutes. Does everybody know what I'm talking about? I can ask them individually because the questions that I have are regarding the Finance Committee Report, Budget Finance and Growth Committee Report. But it's.
Yes, Dr. Moffett, can you speak into the mic just a little bit so we can hear all the way over here?
I'm speaking specifically around the April 11th file that was sent to us.
That's the special.
And it has all of the committee reports.
So if, Dr. Moffett, if it's in reference to, say, the student achievement or policy or finance?
You want me to do it underneath that special?
We'll do that immediately following this vote.
Okay.
And that's the very next thing. You will get the first question.
I'm just asking because it said April 11th, Special Meeting. The file is April the 11th, so that's why I'm asking at this point. But I can do it underneath the specific one if you want.
So we'll go ahead and then take a vote on the approval of these minutes and then go to the, just want to make 100% sure I'm hearing this correctly because I don't want to skip over a question that is important now. Does it fall within one of student achievement, policy, budget, or committee of the whole?
Yes.
Great. We'll come to it immediately after this vote.
Okay.
So then, any other discussion about the April 11th minutes? Hearing none, then. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Those Special Meeting for the 11th and Business Meeting for the 11th minutes passed. We're now on to the committee reports. Would Vice President Jones present the report from the Student Achievement Committee?
Yes, I present for board consideration and approval the April 8th, 2022 Committee of Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance. Our first subject was on the fiscal year '23 adopted curriculum and instruction plan. Dave Traubert, our Social Studies Manager, updated the committee on the adoption cycle for curriculum, and it is being recommended for the upcoming school year '22 to '23. He shared with us that the curriculum is on a five- to six-year adoption cycle and is updated on an annual basis. The science curriculum had recently been adopted on February 28th, and then the world languages was adopted, was it at our last meeting? So we've had several adoptions over the past several weeks. And our public can find the curriculum on our CPS website. And then our second subject was the Summer Learning Program, the Summer Scholars. And we got an update on kind of where things stand right now. They've been keeping us informed. They did a formal presentation to the full board not too long ago, but they gave us some additional updates, particularly as it related to enrollment. So at the time of this meeting, the current enrollment for the summer program, pre-K through 12, was 8,766 students. They were involved in additional efforts to get people enrolled and making phone calls and Google signups and PassUp and social media. At that particular time, that was the day that, the last day, but I believe they said they were going to continue. They weren't going to turn people down. So anyway, one of the things that the committee had, the committee asked for is that we get an update around, some data updates. We want to know who's attending, where are they coming from, who are the kids? We want to know where some of the gaps are, and they agreed to follow up with that at a date that we will agree upon later for the Student Achievement Committee. The social-emotional learning conversation was just an update of kind of what's going on with involvement of our school's social workers, psychologists, and mental health partners. And they provided some of the information about some of the responsibilities in all of those areas. Those are all part of our summer learning program and enrichment programs as well for our summer students. Transportation will be offered during the summer as well. So the action item at that time was, I just shared that. We want to figure out how we measure or determine the impact of student learning and identify the possible gaps so that we can continuously improve. All right, so a couple of things to celebrate. Mr. Traubert reported that the curriculum was working with the Nancy and David Wolf Holocaust and Humanity Center located in the Cincinnati Union Terminal. There are, there is a funder who is willing to pay for field trips for up to 15,000 CPS students for five years. The curriculum is currently writing, and it's, it's currently has writing lessons for the following different perspectives on equity in the curriculum. It's embedded in our equity policy, and there are several areas, including social justice, equity, representation, and anti-racism are included in that. Our African-American history courses are being developed throughout the curriculum in our schools. So what's next? The district adopted African-American history curriculum by the CPS teachers. We also will adopt the Point V Credit Financial Literacy Course, and that is by mandate from Senate Bill 1. We have another course called Adulting 101 for 7th and 8th grade electives, including citizenship. We will update and revise the curriculum, guys, making equity and anti-racism lessons more visible. And then, of course, student interaction with peace officers per Senate Bill 68. So having said that, I think I updated the financial literacy is being recommended. There are some things going on with junior achievement financial programs, such as Junior Achievement Global Marketplace for grades 6 through 8, and of course, called It's My Business, 6 through 8. Our next report was on the ACT testing. Our next report was on the ACT testing. It is state-funded ACT test and we just got an update on about the scheduling of that and what's all involved in the prep for that, how we prepare. And approximately as of March 30th, approximately 83% of students, of our students who are eligible to take it have been processed by ACT and we're still waiting on the results. And we're hoping to get the results in the spring and the committee has asked them, Ms. Spellman, to update the board on the aggregate test scores, how many students took the exam, their scores at a future date. We also had a very brief update about the school calendar, which is ready. We have a couple of recommendations which Mr. McDowell shared with us. And he's going to come back to our next meeting to review and update us on those recommendations. And they had to do with the scheduling and how frequently we update the calendar. And so you'll hear more about it at the next update. And then our final presentation was an update, a summary on the principal pipeline. It was done by Dr. Brown with, with two of our DSLs, Taylor Porter and Stacy Hill Simmons from our district school leadership. And they gave us an overview of the components of the pipeline, which include assistant principal practical pipeline, assessment center, leadership tracker system, principal supervision, principal leads and principal hiring and placement. And so that was the extent. We did not have any other business nor did we have any hearing of the public. So with that summary, I submitted as written.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Any questions about the Student Achievement Committee report or anything else? Dr. Moffett, did you have one of the questions that wanted to go to this or maybe spoke to something earlier that you wanted to ask about?
I just want to be clear that where my question goes. So we have on here approval of minutes from April the 11th. I have a question about minutes that were from, that were submitted to us from the April 11th meeting.
Why don't you go ahead and ask it now because I want to make sure we get an answer to it?
Okay. So it was, it says under the finance committee meeting minutes that the board needs to appoint a Hamilton County Tax Incentive Review Council to represent the district in the tax abatement process. So in your report then, can you tell us who that person is? It's in your minute. That was one of the things I wanted to discuss.
I think that'll come up when we do finance committee report or is that not, won't come up?
Because it's from April the 11th and their meeting was April the 15th.
I could speak to that now. I think that's from the, that's the official record of that whole meeting on the 11th where there are a number of committee reports and presentations. I think in our finance minutes from that previous month, we did say to the board that we did have to appoint individuals representing the district. And I think that, I think we did report that. We have not necessarily appointed yet, but we have, I think we did circulate in the minutes some names and possibilities. So if that's, is that correct, Madam Treasurer?
That is correct. The finance committee members nominated an individual to cover, to represent the district, but it, we have, the board has not adopted that yet.
Right. Okay, well, it does say in there that you, that Jen, you called council member Lansman and he gave some names from the city's perspective. I'm talking about that particular one. But it said specifically that there would need to be a board present. So I was wondering who that person was, if that was appointed. And then there was apparently a tax abatement ad hoc committee that was recommended. Is that the same thing?
Two different issues.
Okay.
The first issue is the Hamilton County Tax Incentive Review Council meets annually to review the property owners who have abatements and are they behaving and meeting the demands of those agreements. That, that, that meeting is at the end of June every year and the district sends representatives who attend to make sure that our interests are protected. The other concept where I was contacting Councilman Lansman was around the changes in their practice on approving abatement requests and how it might impact the district and the board and how you, and how you, and the things that you need to do. President Sellers is one who brought it to us as a concern. And so the recommendation was to create a joint subcommittee together. And I think all three finance committee members volunteered to be at the meeting. I've reached out to Mr. Lansman several times and he was following up with his assistant to make sure that we had the meeting set. So we should hear something soon. Does that answer your question?
It does kind of because I don't remember hearing about that at the board meeting during the minutes from the previous meeting when you all, or when you all had that. I don't remember hearing that we had more representation or that we had an ad hoc committee formed for the tax abatement. So that, that was, I was trying to have this underneath the discussion prior to accepting the minutes because I wanted to understand.
And what, again, the minutes that you're citing are from the actual business meeting. It's not from just the committees. It's the committee minutes are part of that official record. Yeah, we did report on both of those committees and one I wouldn't describe as ad hoc. I think it's a, an issue that's been drawn to both, from, from Sellers and also to our treasurer about a need, but I don't know, there's no status. We were in agreement, sort of, of at least attending that meeting, but not committee, to a committee. And then the other one was something we officially, but we did put that in the minutes or it wouldn't be in that document that you're looking at now.
Well, I just read you, it said tax abatement ad hoc committee. So that's why I was just wanting to understand because I, I can read it for you as soon as it comes up, but it was, that was a quote. That was a quote. So I just wanted to understand.
But in fairness.
Who is that represent, who is?
In fairness, you were right that you wanted to talk about and everybody's stunned because thank you for reading all that because that is one of those things that everybody sorted, not the committee reports, but the official record. So I applaud you.
You had a question too, Dr. Moffett, about who the representative, did you give it answered?
Who was the appointed person from the board and then what's the status, I guess, on both of those? Because I'm waiting to pull this up, but it was very clear that, if you give me just a second, oblige me for just a moment, I'll pull it up. But it was very clear that a board member needed to be appointed to that. And so I wanted to understand a little bit more about who was appointed and what the staff, and primarily because there was some significant discussion around myself and Brandon working with the, to come up with, to replicate a committee that had existed previously between the district and the city. And there was some discussion about that. So if we already have had that discussion or there's already been some semblance of commentary, I'd like for us to, I'd like to get clarification.
The only commentary is in the minutes from that meeting, which has been, you know, published and presented and is duplicated there. There's two committees. One is that's a suggestion from city council and the teachers' union and our treasurer about new procedures or what have you. We've all volunteered, they volunteered to be on it. It's a meeting, it is not a committee. The other one is an official committee that has not yet been appointed, but we did circulate names and I guess that activity, treasurer can clear that part up.
Yeah, the, the name is traditionally not filled by a board member. It's filled by an administrator to do the Hamilton County Tax Incentive Review Council. And Ms. Bolton is correct, I was asked to organize a meeting so that we could all understand what it is that we were complaining about and make sure we're on the same page before any committees get created based on your concern.
Okay, well, I just want to read this for clarification. It says, Hamilton County Tax Incentive Review Council assignment. Treasurer Wagner reported that the board needs to formally appoint someone to the Hamilton County Tax Incentive Review Council to represent the district in addressing the tax abatement agreements. The appointment needs to be approved by the board during one of its regular business meetings. And then the committee recommended Kim Hughes, Assistant Treasurer Stephanie Scott, Assistant General Counselor Treasurer Wagner, Mr. Hoing. Then there is a separate one, you're absolutely correct. And I do understand it says the tax abatement ad hoc committee update. Treasurer Wagner reported that the budget finance and growth committee make an assignment at its committee meeting to create a tax abatement ad hoc committee due to concerns around the new Community Reinvestment Act agreements. So, and then it goes on to say, Mrs. Wagner reported that she has spoken with city councilman Greg Lansman and both of them have identified others who are interested in being on the committee. So my questions were around those two and who was appointed and what's an update?
What is wrong in that is that somehow it was used as ad hoc committee instead of it being referred to as a meeting. So the other one is official and will require appointment, the other is not. But I do think that as you and, and Member Craig do put together some lists as to those places where we, the city and the district intersect, I think there will be some financial connections, whether it's relationships with Cincinnati Recreation Commission or those kinds of things. I think some financial ones and that would be open to, of course, all board members. But yeah.
Sure. So then, so then as a point of clarification, we need to clarify this in them because it shouldn't have been accepted incorrectly. It should have been accepted with the changes that it's not really an ad hoc committee, but it's just a meeting.
And the treasurer is in charge of the official document for the, our official documents. So we can make that adjustment.
Okay.
But be very careful though, Doc. You know what's just happened to you, don't you?
What's that?
You now are the official reader of the 82,000 pages. And I applaud you.
Well, I mean, you know, it's, it's there. We're supposed to read all of our.
I've only heard Julie Sellers ever catch me.
No, I think it's good to get it fixed.
This is 117 pages, but I wanted to understand. I wanted to, I wanted to clarify.
Treasurer Wagner, I think, wanted to respond too.
Mr. Hoing, they've already approved the minutes. Do we need a motion to change them, unapprove them or edit them for correction?
Well, let's just do that. And I think that, and it sounds like the right thing to do for Mr. Hoing. So do you want to make a motion, Dr. Moffett?
So sure thing, I make a motion that we approve the minutes with corrections that have been stated.
That's how they did it.
So we have a motion on the floor. Do you have a second? Second from Vice President Jones, any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good.
I'm sorry to take up too much time.
I don't think you should apologize. I think it's a good question. I think we all learned something and we made it a better process. But now I think we're going to go back to the chair of the Student Achievement Committee who gave a great report and just ask, are there any questions from the Student Achievement, Mr. Morosky and then Ms. Bolton?
That Senate Bill 68 that you alluded to, with teaching, teaching kids how to interact with cops?
You say what? Teaching kids?
Teaching kids how to interact with cops? Did I hear that right?
It, yeah, you heard it right. They were just mentioning that to us for information purposes. Hold on, I'm trying to get to it. And of course.
So that has not passed yet? Sorry.
It, it might have.
I thought it did.
We can find out for sure because I can't find it quickly.
No, it's all good. I did, it's all good.
I'll make a note and find out.
I just, yeah, I just want to, to the surprise of nobody, just reflected in the minutes how kind of backward I think it is, first of all, that we have to teach our kids how to interact with cops, but not cops how to interact with our kids. And so if we're doing that as per the state legislature, and I know we are working with CPD and the relationship with our young people, but I think we need to double down on that if we're being forced to tell our kids, the majority of whom are black, how they need to interact with cops. That sounds like a, that's kind of backwards to me.
These minutes were like late, we were, our meeting was postponed, so a lot of it might be backdated or whatever, but I will certainly clarify that.
No, I appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure, I knew I heard it right, but I just kind of wanted to make that sure and just clarify. Thank you.
Other questions and I want to challenge folks to be as efficient as they can because we have a healthy number of topics in front of us this evening. Ms. Bolton?
Yes. I just wanted to applaud a couple of things that the committee did. One, thank you for staying on this issue of the attendance versus enrollment on summer scholars as we get ready again with great intentions to do good stuff and pay millions of dollars for a summer program that is needed and wanted, but at least six times in both committee of the whole, board meetings and in committee meetings, we've tried to nail that down. So I appreciate the committee staying on that and finding a way that we have a process for it. I also really heralded this, that is finally, and I don't know, more than a dozen years, we finally have reached the point where we're talking about field trips for our kids and enhancing their education. So it's very exciting, the Holocaust and Humanity Center that was phenomenal, the suggestion here about the Freedom Center, the idea that we actually use our instructional time if we have the capacity transportation wise to actually enhance their education and get them in the community. Fantastic. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. If with no other comments, we're going to go to the presentation of the Policy and Equity Committee meeting from Mr. Morosky.
Thank you, President Lindy. Your CPS Policy and Equity Committee met on Friday, April 15th at 9:00 a.m. until around 10:40. That committee is myself, Ms. Bolton and Dr. Moffett. We began by talking about the two-year school calendars and how it is student achievement committee's responsibility, not ours. Those of you who were tuned last time or remember that context, so we were happy to give that back to student achievement. The most substantive part of the meeting was probably the next item, our attendance boundary lines. Those of you who have watched policy or student achievement or finance or any number of our committee meetings the past few years have heard this issue come up about our attendance lines for our schools, i.e. they are not necessarily true neighborhood lines or boundaries. And there are other issues enrollment wise, the difference between enrollment and attendance as Ms. Bolton just called out and highlighted. We had a long discussion, actually at every meeting this year, about attendance lines, looking at policies dealing with elementary magnet schools, high school and choice intra-district programs, enrollment in neighborhood elementaries, et cetera. The committee for the past two meetings has discussed the idea of forming an ad hoc committee of this board that would work with the community and the administration to do a serious deep dive into these boundaries. This is, would be a massive undertaking and look at, you know, do they all make sense? Not too long ago on the east side of town, we made some changes to boundary lines that seemed to shore things up a bit. Later on in this meeting, I intend to move that we create that committee at another, another point after the presentation of the minutes. Amendments discussed for these policies will be presented, the ones I just listed, regarding enrollment and lines at the May 20th meeting, which will also be at 9:00 a.m. We also discuss how Cincinnati Digital Academy has grown and recommended students should be able to transfer into the school at the beginning of the year and semesters instead of every day. That school, and I'm going to look for a quick assist from anyone on the committee or anyone in administration, but went from an enrollment of a few hundred to what, 3,000? Is that right? Yeah, and the staff, I mean, it's like hundreds and hundreds of times growth. And so it's becoming unruly during COVID, the peak of COVID, it made sense that you could go in and out, but now it's kind of just becoming unsustainable. We recommended that we invite CDA's principal, Eric Rozier, to do a presentation at our next meeting. So Principal Rozier will be at the May 20th meeting to talk about what's going on at the Digital Academy. The administration will also provide capacity data for high schools and staff. We then have recommended for a board approval, a alcohol waiver for Kilgore's Annual Carnival on May 14th, 2022. We got a Title IX update. We're very proud and policy and equity to let everyone know, if you don't already, that our Title IX protections are some of the strongest you will find. And even during the last president's administration, we maintained them, even though he would have rather seen us not. There are, however, some updates to Title IX that we need to undertake, so our general counsel, Dan Hoing, will bring those to us with the attorney, with the help of other attorneys at our next meeting. Social media policy, Dr. Moffett put this on the agenda, we're happy she did. Largely, the conversation revolved around cyberbullying and letting principals and administrators and teachers know that we do have recourse baked into our system for people that are engaging in that sort of toxic behavior. We talked about three different policies regarding cell phones, electronic devices and social media policy at the meeting. Committee member Bolton recommended the policies impacting the student code of conduct and support guide be reviewed. Those, of course, would ultimately end up in student achievement. The committee also asked to determine how often principals are seeing the social media policy being vibrant or violated. Mr. Hoing provided an estimated guess of 75% and commented about possible difficulty in getting an exact number. So Mr. Hoing's going to. So Mr. Hoing is going to research and study what other school districts are doing around social media policies, and we'll talk about it more on May 20th. And then lastly, under other business, if you attend our meetings or watch these meetings, you'll know that we kind of go through just sort of a general audit of our policies to make sure they're fresh and have language that's up to date legally and just sort of culturally. So we did that and went through a number of policies that you'll see tonight on the agenda that are just sort of cleaning up, some duplicative policies regarding substance abuse, so we'll rescind some of those. You'll see that later. And then our final action was the creation of an ad hoc committee that we talked about last Wednesday and Committee of the Whole, and that, again, I intend to move for the creation of later. This meeting, I present the meetings, or the minutes as written.
Thank you, Chair Morosky. Questions for the Policy and Equity Committee?
Questions or comments?
Questions or comments?
I'm not quite sure how to present this, but I'll just, I'm going to be a straight shooter. With all due respect to my members, my colleagues, about the work they do, I'm having, I'm struggling with a couple of things. One is, I have a very different understanding about policies charged, and that's neither here nor there for tonight, because I think there has to be some clarification provided, and I'm looking forward, like when we do our board governance or wherever it happens, that we can be clear about that. But I do think that there are several things which concern me. One is, and for the members, for people, I'm assuming that everybody knows this, when there is an action item in the minutes, it comes to the full board. If the full board approves the minutes, then that action item is enacted. Now, the actions that I'm questioning are the attendance boundary lines. Number one, we, at the last meeting, we said, we deferred this discussion, we suspended it until, and I think I remember us saying we were going to revisit it tonight to decide if we were going to have an ad hoc committee. Personally, I don't think the topic belongs in policy, but that's me, again, that's neither here nor there. And I also think that, you know, one of the questions came up about who decided to give this the level of priority. It certainly did not come to the full board. And I look at this similar, similarly to the whole issue of transportation. This is one of those topics that came out of the strategic plan that we focused on, and up to a certain point, we were given full reports where everybody on the board was received complete reports of where we were and what was going on. Now it looks like we're at a point of making, taking action on the boundary lines, and we don't, I'm speaking for myself, I don't have a clue what's going on. I don't know what this means, and I'm skeptical about taking action on that. Now, the second thing is, with transportation, there, we have a lot, we have an amended policy that we're supposed to vote on tonight, and we're still looking at the information that's being provided to us. We have two documents that were given to us just recently in preparation for this meeting that we've not talked about. So I'm a little uncomfortable, not necessarily if we, I know we need to pass, to pass the whole issue around transportation because I know it's critical and we need to move forward, but it feels like, it feels a little bit like it's being pushed way too soon in terms of giving us the time or not giving us the time to really look thoroughly to be able to ask the appropriate questions that need to be asked around transportation. So I don't feel prepared to ask the question at all. So, you know, given that, I mean, I'm having some, I'm going to have some issues about approving the minutes, because if I approve them, then I'm saying, okay, I agree with all the actions, and I just don't. And I think we do, we did say we were going to talk about the one item tonight, and I don't know if we're going to do it tonight, but we said that. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. I want to see if there's anybody else who has a, are you responding to this one?
If other people would like, want to ask questions, but yeah, I have a moment to respond, so I appreciate that, Vice President Jones. And again, with all due respect, this transportation policy has been on our agenda every month this year, and it has been presented in our minutes that everybody has gotten every month, and we finally felt comfortable bringing it forward for adoption. And the administrative work that's in these documents you're talking about is only going to be supported by this policy that now is more encompassing of like what we actually do. So the changes on it, from my perspective, and I'd invite my colleagues to talk about it too, there are three major policies regarding transportation that since February have been on our agenda, and the other two have been passed through. This one took the longest time, the transportation of students for what I think is probably obvious reasons, the biggest. And we got version after version after version, and I respect you not voting to approve the minutes again. That obviously is your prerogative, but I would just like to state that this policy has been in our minutes and discussed all year. I think it's very, very good, and I think it gives the administration the backing they need for what we're going to hear about later. Regarding the attendance one, I don't particularly think it belongs in policy either, which is why, a month ago, I suggested we needed to have some sort of ad hoc committee working with administration, like sort of hand in hand, similar to when we did the Strategic Planning Committee with the community, talk about it. Because as long as I've been on this board, which is only five years, we have talked about this. And to your point, you brought this several weeks ago on a few different committees, and so that Committee of the Whole, when we talked about it, my understanding was the way it was left by the President was that, and I quote, "Anybody's welcome to make a motion to create this committee," which, again, I intend to do tonight because I don't think it belongs in policy either. I do think it's important, I mean, to your, to your point of how did it elevate to this level? I'll just speak for myself. It has been discussed in every committee of this board since I've been on this, and if you were at our meeting, Dr. Moffett and Ms. Bolton can attest to this, two meetings ago, I finally, I kind of just had a moment and said, I'm sick of talking about this. And we have to, I think we need to move this forward because at the end of the day, I think there are equity issues regarding our neighborhood boundary lines and the way we do enrollment. I also think brass tax-wise, there's transportation and cost issues that I do think are alarming. You know, we're gonna, you know, have the cliff effect, we talk about it a lot, so that's the reason I think it elevated, so we need to stop talking about it. But that's just me.
So here's what I want to, we'll come back in just a second, but for just how we're going to run things this evening point, one of the things I'm aware of is we have some wonderful people who are sitting here excited, I think, to do a couple of presentations about, among other things, the Academy of Multilingual Immersion Studies. I said we have some wonderful people who are here in our audience tonight, ready to do a presentation about the Academy of Multilingual Immersion Studies. So here's what I'm going to propose. I think if people have additional questions for the Policy Committee report, I think we should ask those, then I think let's hear the other committee reports and vote to adopt, I hope, all of the reports with the exception of the Policy and Equity Committee report. Then, once we've heard from our presenters, thank our presenters, and then they can choose if they'd like to stick around or head home. I think we should address this topic squarely about the additional committee proposals, so we should make a motion, we can have discussion, we will vote, and then we'll get some clarity on that and then keep us moving forward, because we do have a significant amount of other business we need to do this evening, and I want to make sure people get clarity and answers, but I also want to be thoughtful about the other folks we have in our community.
That's fair. That's fair. If I could just, I know we've got two more reports to get through, and everything goes to a vote, right? And we can always do what we need to do as far as that, but, but I do think, for me, it's a bigger issue than the way we've explained it, and all of it has to do with us understanding what the roles of the committees are, how actions happen, when do things rise to the level of a full board discussion? And it's going to be the same thing when we get to budget and finance around the tax levy stuff, but I actually have a suggestion around that. So I'll leave it at that. And I do respect that we have other people here.
Okay, so then any other last questions for the Policy Committee report? Ms. Bolton?
I have one comment. The board establishes boundary lines. That's the first thing we established in policy as to who is responsible for it. It's a huge issue. It is a policy issue. It is also long overdue, because when we redrew the lines before, I was not here, we did partial kinds of things, and there were different federal laws that even pertained to how you were allowed to draw lines than exists now. So everybody says, do the big stuff, board, but then when you do the big stuff, well, I don't know if we should do this or we have to do it all, but you found tonight why as a whole board, you can't do a lot of that gut work and scut work with one another, and that's why you have committees. When this committee first, when the board first dealt with this transportation policy that is up tonight, it was like 1944.
And I do think we'll have more time to talk about that in the context of a vote.
I'm just going to say that, but I really resent, say, let's do big stuff, then when you do the big stuff, well, I don't know. So I'm happy to present for Finance Committee, so that we get that one, but I don't like having to table a Policy Committee after all the work.
So will, any last questions on policy? Okay, so we'll hear a report from our Budget and Finance Committee?
Yes, we had, as always, our monthly update and financial reports that are posted for the public and also for the Finance Committee to review, and those are included chart after chart and numbers after numbers in the Finance Committee's minutes. One of the big issues, and it's something that the President Sellers raised this evening, and I would hope that our Treasurer will be able to have a brief description of what was shared from the Quality Improvement Team, the QI team, regarding position management presentation, but in the efforts to move ahead, I'll get through everything and then maybe refer a minute or two to the Treasurer. But the Finance Committee was thrilled to hear the work that had been done in the efforts of efficiency and better understanding regarding what are, what we are calling negative vacancies, and the Treasurer can define those for us. We found that it would be a good model. What was used by the QI team could do a lot of other good work operationally in many of our other small and large operations. We had done a presentation by the Treasurer about the budget update and announcing that on May 3rd and also on May 31st of this coming month, we're going to be having town halls about our budget and want to make sure that people understand that it is still a living document, still being evolved, and we appreciate current administrations and the incoming administrations' work on it, and significant work has been done. Also, we had a fabulous presentation from Preschool Promise folks that had lots of news, and a lot of their news really was about the fact that we will be needing to write, together with them, a new master agreement for Preschool Promise, because the five-year one that is, that's been in existence is expiring at this time. They have presented a proposal to our General Counsel, Treasurer, and also our Director of Early Childhood, and that will be coming to the board. They'll be reporting about what they found when they read the first proposal, first draft, if you will, by the Preschool Promise folks, and then we'll be able to direct them as to how we want them to negotiate the issues that face us. We also heard a report from Director Brooks, who told us about the needs for additional seats, especially on the east side, talked about needs for some play areas, and I think that's even come up as something that we must do. As mentioned, the John P. Parker area in support of finding more seats in, on the east side, which has come before us at least the last two years, maybe three. We had a good levy discussion to where the committee determined to recommend to the full board for its approval, a 10-year levy rather than the five-year. It's a levy for $51.5 million annually. First passed in 2008 and has been renewed twice since then, and will be up for renewal, and I know we're going to have a discussion about it today. We had a great presentation and full update, if you will, on Yellow Bus and some additional information regarding Metro. Having said that, we also got some more information about the monies and the facilities that are part of our facilities' needs and where the money is coming from, and maybe time to reconsider. Some of the ESER funds was also mentioned, as we are in new circumstances. And then the Treasurer shared with us new goals for the coming year. I will ask a point of personal privilege. There is a paragraph in the minutes, if you have them, before you proposed agreement revisions to master agreement. I didn't do a very good job of proofing this, but I am going to propose a different paragraph that appears right under that headline, proposed agreement revisions, because what was written was confusing, and I apologize for it. Ashara Jackson, this is the revision. Ashara Jackson, Executive Director, Cincinnati Preschool Promise, reported that a working committee was appointed by the Preschool Promise Board of Managers to begin a review of the master agreement and develop a proposal for a new one. That proposal has been sent, excuse me, sent to the CPS administration. A joint agreement will require action by both boards. So I would like to revise that one paragraph with that new material, and then I submit for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton, any questions for the Finance Committee? Vice President Jones?
Yes, I have a question to Treasurer Wagner. I think back earlier, earlier in the year, maybe January, February, you provided a calendar for when all of these, the finance reports and the tax levy stuff was due. What was the date that the tax levy, that we needed to have the resolution passed?
So there's two resolutions. The first one has to be passed 100 days before the election day, and the second one has to be passed 90 days before the election day. So the latest to do that would be, I have it on, July 31st would be the latest that you could pass the first one.
Okay. So then my second question is, aren't we required by statute to have a public presentation about the levy scenario? And that's the first part of the question, and then secondly, am I the only board member who doesn't have a full understanding of how we got to the 10-year levy or the $51.5 million?
No, you're not the only one.
You're not the only one.
Okay, so I'm okay with this being a first reading, and I would approve that, but I would approve it with the recommendation that before we put the final reading on, that we do a very short presentation to the public around the pros and cons of the 10-year, the millage and the 10-year why, why we did it this way. That's all I'm asking on that one.
I think there will be, I'm going to jump in for a second. I think we'll have an additional chance to talk about that too during the part of the agenda on that first reading. I'll say I also have a series of questions that are in line with yours, Vice President Jones. I'm going to hold mine until later, but I have a series of things I'd like to ask.
I want to.
Ms. Bolton, then.
I want to refer over to the Treasurer once I submitted. I wanted you to describe the negative position piece.
Yeah, so the Quality Improvement Team was created to improve the process of eliminating delays in payrolls and errors on paychecks. Part of the issue that we were dealing with was in overfilled positions due to the way we were managing our positions in the, in the system. And so we called those a negative vacancy, so it's not a vacancy, and maybe it's just difficult terminology, but it's a negative vacancy, so it offsets the other vacancies that we have. But it causes a lot of heartache and delays, and so we worked on a team, a joint team with talent development for a year and a half with the Quality Improvement Manager, and we're able to implement some new processes and new safeguards in order to prevent them from occurring to begin with and thus helping us to control the cost of our human capital. A negative vacancy is simply an overfilled position. So we have a, if we had 100 kindergarten teachers in our budget and somebody put 101 in, then that's a negative vacancy because it's overfilled.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I agree with Vice President Jones in regards to getting some more information regarding that as well. I'm not going to say that I'm confused on it, I just think I need some more background
Dr. Moffett?
I have a couple of questions for the Finance Committee.
I have a couple of questions for the Finance Committee about the interme. I definitely have some concerns about the 10-years versus, and I want to see some data on the last 10-year levy that we put down. What was the approval rating? Because I think it was really close. It was, so I, I'm a little nervous about that. But I also have some questions about the Preschool Promise Workforce Council that you clarified in the wording when you added the language from Shara. But I want to make certain that I understand, and then I also have a question for Jen regarding, it says that the Preschool Promise underspent, what happens to that money? And then, do they have a Workforce Council Committee anymore?
I don't know that the Workforce Development Council is in these particular minutes. I know that we're in Januaries and perhaps dating back to September when we had a request from both members of CFT and also from our Director of Early Childhood to, I think it goes back to September, to kind of review, and I know the internal auditor reviewed some stuff, but we can talk about that because I know that's on the agenda later.
It doesn't, you're only bringing that up.
It's not referred in here. It's on, I think it's on.
It is on, because Board Member Weinberg is gonna bring it up later. I just want, I'm bringing it up now because you added language that talked about that. And so, we don't have the word. Can you say that paragraph that you added regarding Ms. Jackson? And I thought it said something about a Workforce Council.
It's about, no, it's all about the master agreement being up. And this is its last year. We have to write a master agreement with them.
And who would do that? Would that be the Council as being a part of that or no?
No, the Workforce Development Council directly reports to the Board of Education. It's a special part of this, of the Preschool Promise. But both the Preschool Promise Board of Managers and the School Board will be writing, or have our experts be writing with our advice, a new master agreement.
Okay, well, we can definitely talk about it a little more. We went to that meeting, and they're a little confused as to who's gonna rewrite that, and I am, too, so.
Well, when we get to that, we can talk about it because I can give you the dates and who asked what. This was brought to us by the administration, and it was also brought to us back in September. We didn't invent this one, so this was brought to us, and I think we're good. But did you want me to read that paragraph again?
Yes, if you could just read that one more time.
Okay, first paragraph, I would like this to be the revision. Shara Jackson, Executive Director, Cincinnati Preschool Promise, reported that a working committee was appointed by the Preschool Promise Board of Managers to begin a review of the master agreement and develop a proposal for a new one. That proposal has been sent to CPS Administration. A joint agreement will require action by both Boards. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that.
Absent any burning questions for our Finance Chair, we're gonna hear from Mr. Craig on the Committee of the Whole Report.
Alrighty, so the Committee of the Whole met on Wednesday, April 20th. We covered our three-month Board priorities. Again, as President Lee mentioned, our goal is to get to at least 50% of our time dedicated to these priorities as we do these updates. And as of the 20th, we were at 44%. That's a pretty good pathway to getting to our 50% or better. We also had a presentation on the world languages curriculum from Sarah Morales, Liz Owens, and Dr. Travis Eager, where they discussed our goals for increasing equity and access, specifically referencing the K-12 curriculum adoption, our pathway, our K-12 pathways for each language. So, again, recognizing some of the offerings and opportunities for Arabic and Japanese at the high school, expanding Chinese and Russian beyond Walnuts, as well as French, Korean, and ASL in elementary schools. We talked about diversifying, making sure that we have offerings that go across all schools, making sure there are multiple languages available for study, and then also working to get an early start to that process. There is also a timeline offered for the adoption and trainings to ensure that, write a set of information. We also highlighted, again, the number of students who are in there. So, we had some celebrations of the 9,570 students in languages. The strong foundation that we built in the curriculum adoption is, that's in progress at the point, at that point. So, we celebrated all those wonderful things within our discussion of world languages. The Committee talked about the need for more foreign language teachers in foreign languages at all elementary schools, as well as recommended that ASL be expanded across the district, as well as Korean. We then talked about the budget engagement plan that Treasurer Wagner offered, updating some specific dates and highlighting specifically the town halls with regards to the formats. There will be an in-person as well as virtual option through both, the intention was through both Blue Jeans and Facebook Live. There being the two town hall schedule, May 3rd and May 31st. The first one focusing around how the district is funded and explaining the changes to state funding formula, as well as giving the public an opportunity to ask any questions they may have. On May 31st, the town hall topic would be around the administrative budget proposal for Community ESER. Each presentation, each town hall would be set up as a 15-minute presentation, and then given an additional 45 minutes for public Q and A, inviting the public to please bring your questions and ideas to this, to those sessions. Additionally, we talked about Treasurer Wagner finding other ways to bring engagement throughout the year to the community to ensure that they get more than just the two opportunities to be a part of the discussion. And then proposing, bringing a group to kind of provide that guidance to Treasurer Wagner on how to expand those opportunities for community feedback. Other business that we discussed, we covered House Bill 616, where we discussed having a, having possibility of an op-ed or something to the more general public standing from the Board, discussing our opposition to House Bill 616, as well as constructing some language that I think we will cover later today. We also made sure to recognize and send out, or plan to send out condolence cards to some recent, to the families of some recent students lost in our district. And again, we want to make sure it's important that everyone in our district understands that every child in our district is important and every person is valued. So, the Board wanted to communicate that. We also, as we've already started to discuss today, proposed discussing the possibility of creating an ad hoc committee to address the boundary lines. We will have a further discussion of that later today, as well as, we made an assignment to have, for a regular business meeting to, for Women Helping Women program with Hammond County Commissioner Grealish. And it's the report as written.
Thank you very much, Mr. Craig. I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt the Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee report, the Budget, Finance, and Growth Committee report, and the Committee of the Whole report. That excludes the Policy Report, which we're gonna come back to a little bit later on this evening.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just like, yeah. I would just like to point out that, and Mr. Craig did a great job reporting on those minutes, but in those minutes, it is called out explicitly that we would have a vote today on the creation of an ad hoc committee to talk about the boundary lines.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. All in favor of adopting those three of the four reports? Signify by saying aye.
President, Lindy, I have a question.
Yeah, Dr. Moffett?
Why are we taking Policy out? I don't understand why we're just taking Policy out. We still had some questions regarding the Finance one as well.
I was under the impression that we resolved the Finance Committee question. Is that not accurate?
That's over here. Well, I think, I understand the best interest of time, and I really don't want our visitors to have to be delayed too long. But I think that what I would feel comfortable with is delaying all those votes. Let the presentation come, and then we come back and revisit all of them because I think that there are, there is ad hoc committee discussion in all of it, if that's the reason for the delay of a vote.
I think we're close enough on the other three that I'd like to see where those votes are. You should feel free to vote against it if there's anything in it that makes you feel uncomfortable. But can we see ayes for adopting those three Committee reports? Signify by saying aye.
Oh, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Dr. Moffett?
Okay, so, thank you. I think we'll move to announcements. Does anyone have any brief kudos they would like to share?
Oh, we do have an announcement. We are, Board Member Weinberg and myself are supporting, wearing our Sands Montessori shirts today. This is the school that we're supporting, so today is a Sands Montessori Day. We had an awesome visit. It seems like it's been months ago, but it was only a couple of weeks ago. So, shout out to Sands Montessori and all of the students there. Wait, let me show you our little shirts that they designed.
I don't know if they can see it. You might have to stand up.
Oh, okay, let me stand.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Any other kudos? Okay, we will then, with great joy and enthusiasm, invite up our Academy of Multilingual Immersion Studies guests for a presentation. Thank you.
So excited to hear the presentation from Principal Kelly Bagayoko, who's leading us. Welcome.
Oh, no worries. Thank you, everyone. I'm Kelly Bagayoko. I have the pleasure of serving as Principal of Academy of Multilingual Immersion Studies. I'm joined here by two of our amazing educators, Ms. Alyssa Allen, who's our kindergarten teacher, one of our lead teachers in the building, and Ms. Sasha Steinreid, who teaches 560. She's our team lead at 560, and she's also our CFTBR building rep. So, thank you all so much for having us. Academy of Multilingual Immersion Studies is a citywide magnet. We are a pre-K to 8 building located in Rose Lawn. Our students are all language learners. So, some of our students, roughly 50%, are English language learners. They are heritage speakers of Spanish, MUM, and other languages of Guatemala. Roughly, we are expecting 315 students out of our 550 for summer scholars, and we look forward to serving them and having a wonderful opportunity to provide instruction and enrichment this summer. We really pride ourselves on teaching students the value of learning about other cultures and other people and other languages. And so, when we talk about everyone in our building being language learners, that includes the adults. So many of us are increasing our Spanish proficiency every day and practicing and learning with our students. So, we're really proud of the model that we're able to offer. We're really appreciative of the support that we've received from administration and the Board to continue to provide this really valuable service to our community. Ms. Allen will come up next and talk a little bit about Academics at AME. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. So, at AME, we emphasize bilingualism and bilinguacy in grades K through 8. Our students develop a high level of thinking, listening, speaking, reading, and writing in both Spanish and in English. So, students every day partake in 50% of their content in English and 50% of their content in Spanish. Students also strive for academic excellence in all subject areas as teachers and students are meeting or exceeding district and Ohio Department of Education state standards. Additionally, as Ms. Bagayoko stated, everyone at AME is a language learner. So, whether students are learning Spanish or whether students are learning English, whether teachers are learning one or the other, everyone is able to develop a positive attitude and appreciation towards world languages and cultures in our global society, promoting everyone's involvement in world issues.
Hello, I'm Sasha Steinreid. I'm just going to be talking about some amazing partnerships that we have available at our school. So, we do have school aid and activities beyond the classroom that support and help us with our summer scholars program. Then we also have Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts for our students there. We have Junior Achievement, St. Xavier High School, where we're paired up with high school students to mentor and support our students at our school. We also have the 4-H Club, which is an agriculture and farming club that we have started there, which really provides opportunities for students that are interested in any of these programs to get some experience in that kind of environment. And then we also have La Soup, which helps us give some frozen soups to some of our low-income students. We also have the Anthony Muñoz Foundation, which supports our students in teaching them mentorship, as well as giving them the opportunities to go and participate in activities like weekend camps or summer programs for those students. We also have Sup Casa, which is a tutoring program for our students to give them that additional support in the contents that they are struggling in. We have our Mind Peace Partnership, which have allowed us to create calming centers for both students and teachers in our building. We also have cool-down spots in our classrooms available to those students who need that break throughout the day. We also have Talbert House, which helps our students in their social and emotional adversities and trying to help them and figure out new strategies for them. And we have many other partnerships that have given us the opportunities to open and provide extracurricular activities for our students there. Thank you.
So, finally, I want to wrap up just by saying that we are pursuing as many extracurricular activities as we can offer our students. We want to really be responsive to the whole child. We embrace the district's positive behavior intervention approach to discipline. And so, part of that is building relationship. Many of our teachers, including these ladies, have and run after-school programs that our students are able to stay after school and participate in. Some of those are soccer and Lego club, dance and cooking and culinary club. We have gardening. So, these are some of the things that we have developed, and we're going to continue to develop in response to student and parent interest. We historically, annually, have a historic Heritage Month celebration, Black History Month celebration. We do a winter fest, and our last day of school is the Day of the Child. Children's Day are Dia de los Niños. And we try to bring in as much culture and as much reflection of heritage as we can to celebrate with our students. But we really want to thank our parents. We want to thank you all, our teachers, the dedicated, hard-working staff at AME. Every adult in our building is an educator, and we value what they contribute so very much. So, thank you all for the time and opportunity to talk about what we're doing and highlight our students. They really are amazing and loving. Thank you all so much and for the work that you do to make it possible.
Thank you all so, so much. If you can hang out for a second, people may have some questions or at least some gratitude to share with you all.
Sure.
We will try to be as swift as we can. Mrs. Weinberg is gonna go first.
So, I'll start off first. Just wanted to thank you all for everything that you do. I know myself and Board Member Moffett, we were able to visit and really see the children engaging in, I have to pronounce the word. It's a tongue twister if you say it three times. Bilingualism, say it three times really fast, everybody. But, and the bilinguacy. That was really, really neat to see. And I just, again, thank you for everything that you do.
Other Board members? Mrs. Bolton, Ms. Bolton?
It's great to see you.
Thank you, and you, too.
Been a couple of years. Real quick, I think it's wonderful. I've said a couple of other times where we have our schools like yours and Roberts or whatever. I think we should kind of package them, market them as international schools. I think that people would better understand what's going on, and I think that would really even attract more people. And it's, they're great gifts that we have these particular schools. I do just want to always go on the record, though, is that I know we were talking early last year, and I know it's been worked on. Of course, having the IB program on the west side. I feel very, very strongly that we should have a mirror IB program using AME and AWL and maybe going into Withrow. I just hope that we can find some money in the budget, the current evolving budget, that indeed we can pursue that on the east side and the west side, even if I have to keep saying it and saying it and saying it in front of the Treasurer. But I just, I think it's great. We are an international city, and you all are the best. We are an international city and you all are the best of, of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Ms. Jones.
Yes, I'll be very brief. Hi. Good to see you.
And you too. Thank you.
Um, this district is full of hidden gems and we don't talk about them enough or market them enough or whatever. And AW is absolutely, um, AME. That's what I meant to say. I got that wrong. My brain is somewhere else. But you are truly one of the hidden gems. And, um, uh, I have a granddaughter who is a kindergartner and she has a little friend who she used to go to school with, who transferred to that school. And her, her mom talks about, um, her speaking Chinese or whatever language. I think she speaks Chinese, but she is, uh, very happy there. And I've heard that before from other parents whose kids go there.
Thank you so much. We're very happy, um, and our families are amazing. Our students are so eager and they're happy to teach us Spanish and have us learn alongside them. So it's really a great opportunity.
Dr. Moffett?
I promise I'll be brief.
Yes.
Thank you so much for the work that you do and for welcoming us when we came. It was just kind of like, we just joined the tribe and we just fit, we just, it, it felt really, really comfortable. So I can imagine the environment that you all create every single day. Got a chance to see that in person. I wish everyone else could see exactly what, what the magic that you all showed us. And so keep up the good work. I really wish you had students here because we got a chance to see them and they were awesome, but I understand, especially since we went late. But thank you, thank you, thank you for everything that you do and know that you definitely have some supporters up here on this stage because I was very impressed and I continue to be. Thank you. Thank you all.
Mr. Craig?
Yeah, um, I will be brief also because I think everyone's already shown a lot of appreciation of, and said the things I would say. Um, I would, I really always like to highlight the fact that we are doing more than just teaching the language, but we're teaching culture, um, which for me in a lot of ways also, I loved hearing the fact you mentioned dance in there. It was just like something that I, the, the board members know that is a passion of mine. But, uh, I think that's part of how you get people to appreciate and love and feel included and feel that sense of belonging is when you bring the culture into it. And so I really think that's such an amazing thing that you all are doing.
Thank you.
I'll just add my, go ahead, please.
I was going to just say thank you all so much for the time. We really do appreciate it. Um, we think our program is really special and we appreciate you all giving us the opportunity to share information about what we do.
Thank you very, very, very much. We're grateful to have you here.
Thank you.
As we bring up our next presentation on transportation, I want to ask Mrs. Weinberg to forgive me for skipping over our retirements. Uh, and we'll hear that very briefly as we welcome up our transportation presentation.
That is okay. Thank you, President Lindy. So I have a lot of names to announce. Um, first, just want to start off with our certificated personnel in terms of retirement. Um, I have Teresa, and excuse me if I pronounce the name incorrectly, but I'm going to state the person's name and their position in the school and I will try to be quick. Um, we have Teresa Emberding, a teacher at Cheviot. Beth Carpenter, an intervention specialist from Dater Montessori. Jan F. Carroll, an intervention specialist from Sands. Charles R. Coil, excuse me, Charles R. Cole, a teacher at Withrow. Mitza G. Konsetani, teacher at Sands. David Dixon, teacher at Woodward. Robert Hale, a teacher at Mount Washington. Cynthia Kelly, a teacher auxiliary. Kenneth Richardson, a class three substitute teacher. Daniel Senate, teacher at Woodward. Beth Sifry, teacher at Cheviot. Fabra Thompson, teacher at Parker Woods. Don Thomer, intervention specialist, Parker Woods. Kimberly Wade, a speech pathologist, Student Services. And, uh, the last person would be Catherine Yunker, a teacher at Sands. We also have several civil service personnel that are going to be, um, doing their retirement. We have Denise Hodges. She's a paraprofessional. Brenda Jones, a paraprofessional. Virginia Summers, a paraprofessional. Catherine Thomas, food service helper. Deborah Thompson, lunchroom manager. And Julie Anne Thompson, a custodian. So we just want to, of course, thank them for all of their work and their hard service and wish them well in their future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Uh, we're going to hear now from Ms. Solano on a transportation update, which is, uh, one of our biggest priorities. Thank you.
Um, good evening, Board. Thank you for, um, having me. I actually have some members of the team, um, and I asked them to come because this is really a collaborative effort, um, with those in our department. So I, I don't know if you know Ms. Pam Williams. Pam is our supervisor. She's got many years in transportation. And then Lenise Fuqua is our, um, interim transportation director. So I asked him to join me tonight. So I, I hope that you've all received the report. I hope you found it comprehensive. Um, it includes all the different options that we know are, are available as of now. So, um, I had sent you a preliminary report on Friday and sent you a final version today. I believe Krista sent it to you. Um, if you happen to print out the wrong one, this is the one with the table of contents, um, having page 11. So this is part of our optimized capabilities, part of our strategic plan. And, um, you know, our goal is to get better. Um, I think we are really making some strides even this year with just kind of stabilizing transportation and we're really excited about, um, the possibility for next year. And I, I'm going to reiterate what our, uh, vision is. We really want this to become a seamless part of our enrollment process and even for our, uh, charter schools and, um, non-public, um, schools, uh, neighbor, neighbors. We want to make sure that they're getting the transportation that, um, they're eligible for in a timely manner. We want to be known as a best-in-class, um, for customer experience that when families and community members call us, uh, they feel, um, reassured and feel like their questions are answered. Um, and our goal is to do that by the first, our, our first conversation with them. We did make a few adjustments to the transportation plan, um, but a, as you can see with the checkmarks, we are moving right along. We are going to, w- once the board makes a decision on what options they want, then we'll be able to assign routes to the vendors and we'll be able to, uh, bring contracts to you for your approval. Um, and we'll be working closely with, uh, purchasing and also our legal counsel to do that and hopefully early May. Um, and then at that time too, we'll have the final start and end times for all of our schools, we, for our CPS schools. We are still getting start and end times, I mean, beginning of the year and end of the year, start and end times from charter and non-public schools. So hopefully we'll be getting, um, the rest of those, um, soon. So tonight we are submitting a final, uh, report and hopefully this will give you enough information to make a decision. But just to recap, w- w- what we offer, what, what our small but mighty transportation team offers, um, we provide, um, students who live in our, um, attendance area, um, who are eligible for transportation. And those students are, uh, kids who go to CPS, our non-public schools and our charter schools. And we're actually going beyond the law. Many school districts just do what the minimum is and that is more than two miles, um, from the school and that's K to eight. And, um, CPS has been very generous by providing, um, transportation to our K-six students who live at least one mile from the school and, um, transportation to our seventh through 12th grade students who live at, um, at least 1.25 miles from school. So what's happened in recent years, um, it's not necessarily, um, just us. It's, it's, um, some of these things are, um, nationwide trends. Uh, for example, the bus driver shortage, we've been hit along with other school districts in the country pretty hard because of pandemic. We, we all have seen with our own personal vehicles, um, the increase in fuel costs. And with us being in our fifth year, um, of our vendor contracts, we've noticed, um, on average about a 10% increase for next year. And each year those vendor prices have gone up. And then of course, um, our partners sorta had discontinued their extra routes this summer. And a, as a result of that, we put our seventh, um, and eighth graders, actually seventh through 12, on the regular metro routes, um, which also meant for several students having to take transfers to catch, um, an additional bus home or to school. So, uh, we started with looking at what are our options for next year? So we wanted to make sure that we were selecting vendors who could collectively meet the district's transportation needs. And as you know, our, our needs are, are pretty diverse. We continue to grow with our most neediest kids, um, our homeless students, our, um, foster place students and our students with disabilities, uh, who need specialized transportation. And so we needed to pick vendors who can manage, who, who can meet the needs of all of our students who need transportation. And then we also talked about, uh, purchasing a small CPS fleet. We haven't had a fleet since, I think, World War II. Board Member Bolton. But we're looking to, um, to, looking at the possibility of that, um, to expand our opportunities to our, our students for more field trips, for instructional career visits, um, for healthcare visits, to name a few. And so with all of the, um, issues that we were facing in the industry, um, along with, um, some of the other things that we wanted to do, like add more students to our, um, yellow bus service, we decided to do an optimization study with a, a company called, named Alpha Route. And what they did is we, we provided them with, um, seven different options and we asked them, how can you, um, put all the kids that we need on these buses while controlling the number of buses that we'll actually need? And so some of the things in that optimization study was looking at putting seventh and eighth graders on a yellow bus and then trying to limit the riding times on those buses to 55 minutes when possible. And then what if we were to reduce mileage eligibility for all students to one mile? Not just our K-six, but our K-12. What would that look like? And then, um, we did, we do have some high schools this year who start at 9:15. And, um, after the board's discussion, um, we wanted, we wanted to make sure that we can get those kids, um, to school earlier than that so that it falls within the range of a healthy start time. And so we were looking between eight and 8:45. So those were, those were the things that we asked of our consultant. And this is what they, um, so this is what they were able to do. And so you can see, you, it's, it's, um, plotted out, but the first column is our FY22 status quo. So that was just to compare what we have this year, um, to all the different options that they ran for us. And one of the things that I wanted you to see is that, on average, the bus rides, in other words, when they're on the bus, riding home or coming to school, on average, we teeter between 23 and 25 minutes. So for this year, the status quo, it's on average 23 minutes. But if you look at the maximum bus rides, um, we did have some kids who were riding up to 91 minutes on the bus. And then if you look at all the options, um, they were significantly less. And then we, uh, in order obviously to get more kids on the bus, you, you're going to have situations where some kids are going to have to get to school earlier than, than normal and, um, some kids are going to be on the bus a little bit later, um, at the end of the day than normal. And this is to accommodate more students, um, seventh and eighth graders who live outside of their, um, it's, um, who attend a school outside of their, uh, their, um, residence area. But, um, even with that, and we'll read in the report that, um, 89 out of the 110 schools that we provide transportation to, uh, they were leaving within 10 minutes of the last bell. So, uh, we only had one school who was leaving 30 minutes and that was, um, an MRDD, um, student in, um, attending an MRDD. But, uh, for the most part, most, um, of the students are leaving the building at, in the afternoon, um, within 10 minutes. And so the last two options, F and G, we looked at what it would be if we, um, started those, uh, eight high schools, move their start time from 9:15 to 8:30. Um, and I'm going to show you the results of that on the next slide. And then we also looked at, um, 9:15 moving that to 8:45. I think some of the, some of the information has left the screen, but, uh, board members, if you look at page 10, you'll see it. For some reason it's not, it's not showing up on the screen. But what you'll see is the status quo for this year, um, 319 buses en route. If we go and all the other, all the other options was, were less than that. Um, options F and G, um, you have, options E, F and G, you have seventh and eighth graders added to those yellow buses and we're still less than what the status quo was this year without seventh and eighth graders. F is, um, having those 9:15 high school start times moved to 8:30. And G is having the 9:15 start time moved to 8:45. And so you can see F requires about five more buses. So on average, if you figure approximately $100,000 per bus, so there's a difference of approximately $500,000 from going from option G to option, uh, from option F to option G. And then average riding times, and these are averages, as you can see, our younger kids, on average, from the time they leave the building, time they're on the bus, leaving the building, it's about 23.1 minutes. Our seventh and eighth graders, the average time is 27.4. And as I mentioned before, you know, now you have seventh graders on the bus, um, many of them attend a school that's not within their, um, neighborhood. And then your nine to 12, where you're students with disabilities, um, they have on average the longest riding times. So if you go to slide number 11, you'll see the cost for each of these, um, um, options. So this is just for yellow bus. Currently our cost for these 319 buses is over $32 million. And then what I want to point out in the report is that if you go to page three of the report, it's going to tell you what this ca, this report does not include, okay? So it doesn't include transportation's cost for summer school. It doesn't include, um, the buses we reserved for athletic programs. It doesn't include the cost to have substitutes when, for vendors to have drivers when their drivers are out. Um, it doesn't include cost for our COVID van. It doesn't include the cost for our fuel, um, for these vehicles and it doesn't cost any staff or other, um, contracts that we have outside of this yellow bus. However, if you look, our FY22 is 32 million and all the other options are cheaper. Okay? And that's because we're able to put more kids on the bus with less buses. I mean, so option G, you, you get seven and eighth graders on a yellow bus. Um, you get your 9:15 start time moved to 8:45 and it's, we're, um, estimating $30.2 million for that. And then when you look at your metro options, we looked at what it would, what it would be if we moved everybody to one mile. Okay? So, um, we included seventh and eighth grade also because some of the yellow bus options only include our K-six for CPS. But if you just look at your nine to 12, the difference between, um, one mile and 1.25 mile is almost 300 kids, which equates to almost $100,000. And if you look at the next slide, we also, as I mentioned, have vans, um, for, um, our neediest of kids. And again, the titles for some reason are wiped out. But if you go to page 12 of your PowerPoint, um, you'll see that FY22, we're spending $630,000 now for homeless. We do expect that to go up because we do expect that, uh, those, that group of, um, students to increase. Foster care, we're currently spending about $355,000. We also expect that to go up. And students with disabilities, right now we have, um, 11 students. We estimated 11, um, we don't know if that's going to go up or not, to be honest with you, but that's costing us about $180,000 because those students, the only means of transportation we can provide for them are vans. for them are vans. Now, next year, as I mentioned, one of the new vendors that we brought to our pool is Hop Skip Drive, and they actually provide cars, private cars, which can accommodate one student or more. And as you know, with foster care and homelessness, we have to be, we have to turn on a dime. So if it's just one baby, we got to make sure that baby has their ride so that they can continue to go to school. And so we also looked at the cost of a fleet, and we put two different types here, electric buses and also diesel buses. And as you can see, the electric bus is about three times as costly, but then the trade off is that, you know, they're, they're more friendlier to the environment, and then we're not dependent on diesel. And we don't know when diesel fuel, the prices are going to come back down. But anyway, we did provide both costs. And then, of course, we have CDL drivers that you'd have to consider their benefits and also their salary, a mechanic who specializes in yellow bus or school bus vehicles, a supervisor to be able to dispatch them. And then we do have a transportation call center who currently handles all concerns from parents and the community, and it would not be difficult to add, add dispatching a CPS fleet for our schools with this group of employees or staff members. And then, of course, we'd have to find someplace to secure them. And the thought was Jacobs, that we could build a fencing, similar to how the CPS vehicles now that Facilities uses, those are stored over at Iowa, and they are protected with a fence. Next slide, please. And as I mentioned before, these are some of the costs that are not included in this report. But then we went ahead and did a comparison. What if we were to do option G? We, and compare it to what we are doing this year? So for the yellow bus and metro, we're looking at about $36 million for this year. Option G with metro for nine to 12 at one mile, we're looking at $33.3 million. Our homeless and foster care, we expect that to go up. Our students with disabilities who take a van, we expect that to pretty much be even. And then adding what we expect the fleet to cost us, which is $2.2 million, when you look at the overall cost, what we're paying now to what we could have, providing there are no major changes, when we rerun this report again in July due to, you know, changes in the enrollment, we're looking at pretty much a wash. So next steps, we hope we've given you some information enough to look at what options are out there. And then once the superintendent and the board selects what options they want, then that will be used to inform the contracts, because from those options, we'll be able to tell, we'll be able to put in the contracts how many routes each vendor will be getting. And then again, we'll rerun the analysis in July, because we have to account for new kindergarteners that are going to be coming on board, and then also any new seventh and eighth graders, or just kids transferring in and out. So if you decide to choose G, or really any, any option, we'll have to do, we have to rerun that simulation with the most current enrollment. So our key performance indicators. We have basically three, and I failed to indicate what the target values were on this report, so I apologize for that. But we currently measure both the yellow bus on-time performance and the metro on-time performance. The yellow bus is, on-time performance is actually part of a QI project, and we believe that's been very effective. It's really worked to motivate the vendors to get their buses, get our buses to school on time. We're now over, we're now at 92% on time. So starting from, oh no, yes, it was, it was, so, and like I said, the team works with them on a weekly basis, and it's just, everybody's excited, and the momentum's going, so I'm hoping that we will be able to continue that. So what I'm proposing for next year is that first quarter, because that's when everything just, it just, I don't know, it's not a mess, but everything comes at us at one time. So our goal is to start at 85% on-time performance for yellow bus and sorta. By second quarter, at minimum, we should see 87%. By third quarter, we should be at 90%, and by fourth quarter, we should be at least 92%. So that's our goal. I mean, we're already at 92%. We show that we can do it. And now we've learned a lot this year on what worked, and we're hoping to use that, incorporate that in our processes for next year. And so hopefully, some of those bottlenecks that we ran into will have been cleared out. And then the other big part, too, is to make sure that our kids get transportation as soon as possible. So we are going to measure the length of time it takes to assign students to a route. In other words, Johnny comes in today, Johnny needs to be put on a route. Legally, we can take 10 days, okay? So the first quarter, we're pushing for 10 days, but by the second quarter, we should see that number come down. So by second quarter, we're hoping for seven days. By third quarter, five days. And then by fourth quarters, we should easily be able to do three days. I'm looking to see, she's going to throw something at me. Okay. And then the, the last KPI is just the percent of parent concerns that lead to a successful resolution on the first call. We've actually been doing a really good job on that. And we are looking at have, possibly getting some PD on customer service, just, you know, what works, what works well, what calms people down, what gets people to feel happy before they hang up the phone. So that is something that we're currently researching now. I think that would, it's just good, good for everyone to have that. So we're going to start tracking that with intentionally. And what we're going to be looking at is what percent of calls, not only are they answered, but they were answered with a successful resolution on that first call. That person doesn't have to, like, play musical phone to finally get someone to give them an answer that makes sense. So those are our three KPIs. We're hoping to have 85% of those calls with a successful resolution on the first call by first quarter. Second quarter, we want it up to 87%. Third quarter, 90%, and then by fourth quarter, 95%. So I would just close by, I would like to reinforce three things this evening. There is not a board vote tonight. I just want to put that out there, because it was in the next steps. We wanted to give you the information and inform the public of the options that are on the table, and give you an opportunity to answer any questions. Secondly, we have a meeting coming up. Ms. Wright has been a part of the process. We have a meeting this week with Metro and Ms. Solano, so just keeping her informed, so she's prepared when she makes her transition. And then lastly, I want to give a huge shout out to the transportation team, from Pam
Thank you, Ms. Solano, and thank you, Ms. Amott. Ms. Amott answered one of the questions I had already, so thank you, I really appreciate that. Board member questions? Mr. Marasky?
I just want to start by saying, this is the presentation I've wanted to see for five years, as well deserved of that standing ovation. In fact, I think that's the only time that has happened since I've been on this board, aside from, you know, valedictorians, suitorians, and things like that. So it's well deserved, and I want to thank you all, too. And again, back to our earlier conversation regarding our policy minutes, that transportation policy that is before the board tonight was largely done part and parcel while this was happening. So the language in there, you know, would support any of these better options regarding, like mileage, et cetera, that, you know, items that we talked about tonight. So just, I wanted to highlight that. I want to thank you all for your assistance in policy with that. And I have to say, you know, I know we're not voting tonight. The option G is extraordinarily attractive with service at one mile. And help it do this, having been on every committee that was involved with the healthy school start times and transportation. Somehow, I managed to be on all those committees throughout this entire tenure on the board, and being told repeatedly by different people that it was impossible to have healthy school start times and all of this. And yeah, I'll just stop, because I'll just keep ranting. It's really impressive, it's excellent, thank you.
Can I just make a comp, so the high schools, they were already starting at 8 o'clock to like 8:45, we didn't touch them. It was just the 9:15 ones.
I know, and the compromise you found is just really impressive to me.
Thank you.
Honestly, we were told it would cost twice this, and it was impossible. Hard stop. Clearly not. So thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Marasky. Mrs. Weinberg?
Yeah, so I just want to follow after my lovely board member, but thank you so much for your hard work that you put into this. What I'm really interested in is definitely showcasing the key performance indicators. So thank you so much. I know, just being a parent myself, and just hearing from other parents the length of time, that routes may have been assigned, and to hear that you're really working hard to, you know, decrease that, I'm very excited. And again, thank you so much.
Other board members? Dr. Mathen?
I just want to say, in the words of the young kids that we listen to, you understood the assignment, and thank you, because this is very clear, this is very concise. I want to encourage the community to get the board docs so that they can see it, because it is really, really well thought out, very, 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 very innovative, as far as you all gave us all kinds of options. Option G, I'm with Mike Maraski, Board Member Maraski. I would love to take your suggestion on G and run with it, because it seems like it's the most cost-effective, but it seems like it's also the most efficient. And I just want to say thank you to the team for putting in the hard work, because it did not go unnoticed, and I want to make sure that the community sees that, too. We really, really appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate that. Transportation gets a lot of kicks when things don't go well. We want to let you guys know, we worked hard to make this go right, so thank you.
Ms. Bolden?
Thank you. I think it's great. I'm also supportive. Of course, or F, whatever you think is the better way to go. This does not really pertain to metro, for all intents and purposes, except that we're removing the seventh and eighth graders from metro. So, and we are going to be negotiating, and I failed to mention that in the finance minutes, we're going to be negotiating with Metro sorta for a new contract, and that has to be happening in the next 60, 90 days. So we've got a new contract with Preschool Promise, a new contract with Metro sorta as well. So there's lots happening. But this, the yellow bus plan, I think, is, is very good, and it represents your hard work, and I'm going to say, it's going to represent the community communicating with us, and the board doing its job, which is not to just oversee, but to help in a partnership, representing the community as to what the community wanted. And you guys have delivered remarkably. A couple real quick questions. We can't really talk too much about the metro. You got to come with us with all these ideas and plans like you just did, but in negotiating a contract, we're going to not want necessarily the whole world to know all of our targets or all of our hopes and dreams. So that's a little bit different. But this yellow bus plan, and the van plan, and for our special kids that have particular challenges, I think this is a super effort. I'm on the, on the dedicated fleet, so to speak. I, you know, I'm, I'm happy about the electric, but I'm also willing to lease this first couple of years that we do it, the 10 or 15 buses. I'm interested, though, in the report, you talk about our field trips and our health trips and what have you. Where was the athletic piece?
We have some day activities. These were basically for our day activities. We still have another budget that we have to consider to support the 15 dedicated vehicles that the athletics department has to have to make sure their programs run. So that's outside of what this would cost us.
And I would just suggest that perhaps it be brought inside, as to the largest, the largest justification for our own fleet might be the athletic piece, just because that is a big cost, as well as adding this wonderful new cost, I don't know, wonderful cost, I don't, that doesn't sound right, this needed cost of expanding the field trip. So it'd be great to see those numbers as to how many buses are rolling and the cost of that. I think that would be of interest to help justify a fleet. I think we'd more likely do the fleet, although I know we've got folks that do that. One thing, and this is about metro, too, it is true that the charter kids, by state law, can't have more than one transfer, correct?
Correct.
That's by law this last summer or something, or whatever. So neither can our kids.
Right.
If we're talking in terms of metro, and we have to now figure that out. If you can do this great job on the yellow bus piece, which is the vast majority of the kids that are transported, I can't wait to see what we really do when we look carefully at the metro proposal. And I know that some of it is about the passes, the $315 and whatever is figured sort of in all that, but there might be some other kinds of things we could do. I would, I would only ask that we really hunker down now on the metro piece, and it's great that you're having the dialogue, and it's great that that's occurring, but that's going to be a negotiated contract.
Absolutely.
Last thing, when we signed off three months ago on the vendors that you wanted for five years, we said that when we know, like, this stuff, we would be able to not manipulate, but massage those individual contracts, so that while we're making that five-year commitment to all of the five or six vendors, if I recall, we can now use this, and that will help also on the cost and the commitment for those five years.
Absolutely.
Excellent, thank you. I'm in favor of G or F?
Thank you.
Ms. Amott, have a comment?
I just want to just touch on metro a little bit, and take this time to also educate families. We do have a meeting coming up with metro to work out some of those details, but for the one transfer, that is in place, but if the kid arrived to the bus stop late, it's no longer an option. So I'm highly encouraging our families to get to the bus stop on time, so you can have that one transfer. But if you are late, then you have to go to the app and figure out which is the next bus, and you may have to do two transfers. So really look at the best route possible to get to school on time for the shortage route.
Thank you very much. Other board member comments or questions? I have a couple of them.
I want to echo my thanks, I think, to Connie and team. Truly appreciate it. I think, I'm trying to think through the presentation through the lens of these priorities that we shared. And I think that it's really clear to me that you all addressed, you know, clear measures of success for school year '22, '23. I thought those targets you shared sounded very encouraging. It speaks to, like, how long it takes, but also the experience parents have, or families have with us around transportation, and I think that's really great. I think my question on the outcome side was, let's assume we look at these numbers in October, and we're off. What kind of levers are we going to have with the vendors in this plan to try to correct for that? Like, can we, where I don't want to be is a world where we have targets that make sense, we get to the spall, and our contractors are underperforming against those targets. And I want to make sure that if we're in that situation, there are things we can do to make sure that either that performance adjusts, or we get some money back, or something happens.
There are some penalties in there for things that you just mentioned, you know, where we, that where we charge them back for not meeting, one of the requirements that's in the contract. But what we have found to be really effective is really working with them, debriefing, discussing issues that have come up. issues that have come up. And then what we've seen as a result of that is our, when you look at our run chart, I mean, it is just climbing uphill, and that's why we're at 92% on-time performance now. Though, yeah, we do have some things built into the contract that says you're going to be charged, you know, $500 for this, $100 for this, every time this happens. But on the other side of it, we want to work with them by making sure that, you know, we had in one vendor who, like, tournayed a bunch of employees who weren't effective, you know, because their partnership with us means that much to them, that they want to make sure that they're meeting their end of the bargain. So, as I mentioned, we just continue to work with them. We talk to them on a daily basis. When there are issues with transportation, we resolve it right away. Pam and her team, that's what they do. I mean, they resolve issues. They, and then they debrief with the vendors and say, hey, this is what happened. What do you think can prevent it next time? And then we work with them. So they're just not left to their own device to manage our program.
And if I can just add, we're taking this systematic approach, and this is my opportunity to give a shout out to Children's Hospital. We have adopted quality improvement from our directors to managers, to PLT members, to our vendors. They are partners with us. So we are speaking the same language where it comes to run charts and how to get better, and FEAs on failure modes, and what can we do. So when Connie talks about a discussion, we call that huddles, and now we have systems in place to get better beyond punitive measures. So we're trying to shift the culture of just punishment, because what we found was it was easier for them to write a check to us and continue to give us poor service. So the partnerships and really our partnership with children's in using quality improvement has really not only helped transportation, but also other departments.
I think that's helpful, and I don't want to prescribe any one method for how to, I just want to make sure that we have something in place that you all really believe in, is like, if we're off for any reason, that we have a path forward to make sure it gets back on track.
Absolutely. This is definitely something that will be tracked on a weekly basis, if not daily.
So then the other thing I wanted to ask about was the other bullet we have on these priorities was that the plan be informed meaningfully by community feedback? And so I wanted to just invite, could you share for just a second or two, like, what kind of community feedback has informed the plan? And if you shared this already and I missed it, I apologize.
I'm sorry. Is that part of the KPI piece? Is that what you're looking at?
No, just the transportation plan for next year writ large. My understanding and hope is that it has already been meaningfully informed by feedback from the community. I just wanted to create a moment for you to talk about that, so people heard about it.
I would say talk about your advisory board and what makes up that, and then the surveys that we did earlier.
Okay. So we did. We've surveyed families on, for example, the 7th and 8th graders, on do they want the 7th and 8th graders on the yellow bus? We've surveyed principals. We actually have a principal advisory group that has been with me since October, and they, you know, because they're the ones who communicate with the families, they let us know what's happening in the buildings. We share the plan with them. Do you think this will work? And so they inform us on that. They come to all of our sorta meetings. And then I believe, you know, we've received information from the board on notes that they've taken, from their meeting, your meetings with your stakeholders, and we've used that information to inform the plan as well. And then we do listen to, when we talk to parents, I'm sorry, when our calls, we get calls from our call centers, and, you know, when there's a theme that comes up, then we know that's something we need to address.
That's great. I really appreciate that. Thank you for all this. Last question, I promise. As we think about the cost of this, it's great to see numbers coming down. I also think it's really healthy for us to benchmark what we spend versus the rest of the country. Do you have, and if you don't have it tonight, it's okay for a future meeting, but any sense of what, in this plan, what we'd be spending per transported student, how that compares to some meaningful benchmark?
We can look into that for you. We can definitely come up with a dollar amount per pupil and see if that ratio, if there's like a national standard for that, cost per pupil for transportation, and we can bring that back to you.
And I would just tell you, we are very expensive, because we're going beyond state requirements. So we do not have to do 7th through 12, or 9th through 12, two miles. So just to put it in perspective, CPS is wonderful in what they offer when it comes to transportation, so it has to be apples to apples.
And I think, I agree. I think having that is healthy for us to see. One, my hypothesis is we're doing pretty well in the proposal. I could be wrong, but even if it is more expensive per student, you know, that's a choice that we're saying, that, you know, spending that extra per kid for that extra quarter mile is worth it when we could spend that on something else. And I think just being able to see that and own that decision point, I think, is healthy. But just, I don't want to miss the forest for the trees. I think this is really exciting. I'm really excited about next year. I'm thrilled with the outcomes. I want to say thank you.
Okay. Any last comments or questions for Ms. Solano before we keep moving?
I have one question. Eligible students on the chart, those are all the kids that could possibly partake. There is, it isn't always all of those that do it, there'll be a percentage of that. Or is that eligible, the working number by history?
So those in the tables, in the report, and in the PowerPoint, those are the kids we actually are transporting now. So we pulled a file out of our Versatrans, of everybody who's in the system, and that is what they use for the optimization study. So in use, I don't know the number, 16,600 something, those were the actual figures at the date when that data was pulled.
So if this is really super successful, there'll be a lot more eligible kids, but that's okay, too, because to point to what the superintendent keeps saying, we can't teach them unless we can get them there.
And then what they looked at is like, for the 7th and 12th graders, you know, we know how many are eligible at 1.25 and how many were receiving bus passes. So now the accountant looked at, okay, for other kids in 7th and 8th who live at least one mile, how many more kids would that be? And putting those kids, because we have their addresses and what school, putting them on a bus route, what would that look like?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Solano, very much. We're going to keep moving along to board matters. We're going to hear about a gun storage resolution that was originally on last time, and then this preschool question. And then I'd like for us to tackle the proposal for this additional committee, so that we can create some clarity on that front. So Ms. Weinberg, would you talk to us about number one?
Yes, President Lindy. I just, basically, as you stated, have a couple of items for board matters. I'm first going to talk about the, bringing the topic about supporting the Cincinnati Moms Demand Action and their Gun Safety Storage Resolution. And then, of course, following that, I'll talk about the questions that I have for some clarification regarding the Preschool Workforce Development Council. Just to give you guys some background information, the group presented to Health and Safety on March 21, 2022. The presentation included key information regarding the effects of guns. It was provided that every year. Nearly 350 children unintentionally shoot themselves or someone else when they find unlocked loaded guns. They had some other facts. Number one, nearly 700 American children die by gun suicide each year. Two, one study showed that over 80% of children under the age of 18 who died by gun suicide used a gun belonging to a family member. And three, the Be Smart Program, which they started, is designed to prevent these shootings. It recognizes that storage, secure storage by an adult, gun owners is essential to preventing unauthorized, unsupervised access to firearms by children. So the group is interested in getting the support of CPS and the board to support this resolution. You all should have a copy of the resolution, and if you do not have a copy, the copy's on board docs. I won't read the entire document, but I would like to just have some discussion before suggesting possibly a motion to accept the resolution. They also, within the resolution, has an opportunity, excuse me, they have an opportunity for a parent or guardian participation, in which that parent or guardian would sign to aid in education and expanding responsibility. So I guess, can I just open it up to discussion on this?
Yeah. Ms. Weinberg, could you just tell me again where the resolution is?
Yeah, in board docs. So if you go to board docs, and you go to the item that I'm talking about, you just click on it, and it should pop up for you.
Got it.
Got it?
I do have it. Thank you very much.
And I can read the resolution if you really, truly want me to, but it's a little lengthy. But I think that you all can read as well.
I'll make sure I do my homework. I had just missed that. I had missed that one. Other board members, questions or comments? Mr. Morosky?
I just want to thank Board Member Weinberg for putting this on the agenda. I wholeheartedly support it, particularly with the recent news that guns are the leading cause of death, kids age 1 to 19 now in this country, more so than vehicle crashes, drug overdoses, or cancer. And this is a pretty, I think, common sense way to address some of those issues, so I just want to say thanks for bringing it, and I certainly want to support it.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? So, Ms. Weinberg, would you like to move that we pass this right now?
I would like to, if, you know, any other board members have any questions or any other discussion regarding it. If we don't, then yes.
Do any board members have any other?
Entertaining motion? I'm very supportive of, but it seems like we're holding stuff up that's been through committee and discussed and whatever, and this can go forward. I think it should go forward, but I'm happy to do that, but it's, I'm getting mixed messages. But...
To elaborate on the mixed messaging, can you? I'm a little confused.
My understanding, has this gone through Health and Safety?
So yes, it did go through Health and Safety, and I was not able to present to the full board. So I'd like to present it to the full board, just to make sure that you all are in agreeance with this.
I'm complete agreement with what it is. So did it go through today, Health and Safety, or did it go through a couple of weeks?
No, it went a couple of weeks, but remember, I was not here in attendance at the last meeting.
I think it was actually two months ago, because they presented two months ago in March.
Right. But then we brought it up at the next meeting, and then I wasn't.
So I would suggest that you go ahead and make the motion, and then we'll...
All right. I would like to make a motion that we accept the Gun Safety Storage, storage, excuse me, Safety Resolution.
A second.
We have a first, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Morosky?
The only question I have, and I don't particularly care, let me make that clear one way or the other, what the answer is. I don't know if it matters, that the language, it doesn't really flow in our sort of typical resolution form. Again, I don't particularly care with our language at the bottom and all this, therefore be resolved, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know if anybody wants to do that or not. I just wanted to put it out there that it looks very different than our other resolutions, which is fine. I would just, if that does matter, then...
I think it's an interesting question, Mr. Morosky. The question I was going to ask and can tie to this is just whether anybody in the administration has any concerns. I don't have any. I'm not fishing for any, but is there any reason why adopting this would be a bad idea from the perspective of the administration? Our general counsel is shaking his head no. So I don't see any concern for that.
And I just wanted to follow back up with Board Member Morosky. What did you say at the bottom? You said...
No, I was just saying, you know, it's not in our typical resolution form, which, again, I don't care about. I just didn't know if it mattered, like, therefore be resolved as opposed to resolved, comma. That's not how our resolution's reading at the bottom, you know, Cincinnati Board of Education, noting that we presented it forward, that type of thing. So, and that can all be added. If that can all be added later, I don't care. I just, I don't know. Can it be added later then, or does it matter?
I would ask legal for that one.
Okay, then.
So we have, any last comments or discussions before we vote?
They gave a presentation to the Health and Safety Committee, and I think that this is pretty standardized as far as what they've presented and had resolved at other boards. So this might not be the CPS version of that, but it is. We can probably customize it to meet our standards, but this is just pretty much what they've already gotten approved.
I think it's up to the person who introduced the motion to decide.
I am fine with the way that it is. I think we can keep it, and if we did need to change, I would be open to that, but I'm fine with leaving it the way that it is. And I think Phyllis has a comment.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
So then, absent any other discussion, Treasurer Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Fulton?
Hi.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Ms. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. So we'll move to item number two on board matters, also from Mrs. Weinberg.
All right. I will be quick with this. I just had a couple of questions. I got the chance to attend the Preschool Workforce Development Council meeting with Board Member Moffett, I think it was last week? I feel like time has gone. I just had some questions that I want to, I guess, be clarified and possibly also engage in a discussion with the full board to make sure that I'm understanding everything that I've either heard or read. I know that we also have someone here in the audience, Laura Sanregret? Did I say it correct? Yes, is here to also answer some of my questions as well, if they're not able to be answered here. So I'm going to first state the questions, and you all were able to see a memo, you know, that I put out as well. Some of the questions were answered, I think, a little bit earlier. I will just read the questions quickly. One, I'm just seeking some background information on the Master Agreement between CPS and CPP, who is renegotiating this. I think this was answered, but I just want to clarify this again for the public. Two, provide information about the Master Charter rewrite, who is in charge of this? And again, this was probably answered earlier in our discussion, but it's always nice to clarify again so that the public can hear. Three, when did the Workforce Council change to a working group instead of a council? It was noted that in December, it was voted by the board and presented in the January minutes from the Budget and the Finance and Growth Committee. So I just had a couple of questions on that to clarify. And then I took out one of my questions. The next one would be, what is the change in the work group and the facilitator now? What is their direction moving forward, and who would be the leader? And can the board participate or have a person who sits on this Preschool Board Workforce Committee? I'm not quite sure, so that's why I wanted to clarify and ask. And what would be the role of the board member if they were involved? And then last, what is the process of their budget and who finalizes it, and how are the dollars spent? So I know it might be a lot, but I think it's needed to be clarified.
I think they're all very fair questions. I want to acknowledge that most of this predates my time on this board. I might ask either Treasurer Wagner, or Vice President Jones, or Ms. Bolden, and it may be that there's some research to do, but does any of those folks have line of sight into some of Mrs. Weinberg's questions?
I'm trying to remember all your questions.
I know it's a lot, right?
So the Master Agreement is being worked on by Dan, Eric Brooks, and myself, and Ms. Brooks is on vacation, so she couldn't be here today to help. In terms of the Workforce Charter, I'm just not familiar. I'm sorry.
You can come on down. You can come on down, please.
I do know there was an internal audit on the compliance with the charter language, and there was recommendations that came out of that audit that resulted in some of the changes that came through Finance Committee. I just don't remember the details.
Yes.
Vice President Jones has a...
I'm not sure if we, if, well, let me back up and say, I'm looking at the resolution when we adopted it, and I do think, and I highlighted the area about the Master Agreement, and I think it was, just to kind of reread that statement, it says, whereas the Master Agreement states that the Preschool Workforce Development Council shall be established by the Board of Education to ensure, without duplication of existing functions, that all preschool providers receiving tuition funds maintain applicable professional employment standards, livable wages and wage parity, and curricular alignment to state learning standards. The council has a responsibility of monitoring, reporting noncompliance to the United Way, ultimately to the board. Now, I'm going to stop there, because, and if my memory serves me right, when we got, and Ms. Bolton was involved in sort of creating the structure when we were doing Cincinnati Preschool Promise, this was kind of what, you know how you draw diagrams? This was one of those sort of sidelines where we talked about needing to address living wages for the people who worked in the preschools. The group was formed with keeping in mind that we wanted people, we wanted... we wanted people who represented the interests of the employees who were working in preschool. Am I right? I don't know, I can't remember. I'm asking you if that's right.
Oh, yeah.
And there was no, so we didn't have representation. The board did not have representation on there. Ms. Laura Sanriette was appointed by this board to serve as a representative of the board, so to speak. So there are no board members on this group. And it is a self-staining, self-maintaining, it was, it's been dissolved.
The December Finance and Growth Committee I presented to, and Ms. Brooks presented to, and then it was accepted by you. And in January, we said what was, what's becoming of us. And she said to us, the group, as the two of you were there and heard them say, that we're now a working group. And then we asked for more direction, and then they asked us to come up with what we wanted the direction to be. So we were a little confused still.
It's always been a working group, though.
It's gone from a council to a committee. My impression, when I did the research, when I read about it, it said it went from a council to a working committee. And now it's, we went to the meeting because I got the minutes from Phyllis. I mean, I got the agenda from Phyllis. And it's now resolved that they don't have any future meetings coming up.
So I'm going to jump in for just a second. I was going to say, this is Mrs. Weinberg's item, and I just want to make sure we get you answers to your questions. It may be that we don't have all the people we need, in which case, we can make sure we get a plan in place to get answers to those questions. But I wanted to make sure this was following whatever the reasons why you put it on here in the first place.
It's kind of, but again, like I said, I just wanted clarification, just to make sure.
And I...
And I think everyone else needs some clarification.
Right, I sent to you, I highlighted your questions, and I answered the people who I know who are on the Preschool Promise side of the master agreement, which I think is a, is it a little confusion? That is the same thing that I think that they're talking about. They aren't talking about the charter for the Preschool Workforce Development Council. The workforce, or the master agreement is something that is written in our, that's our agreement basically, between CPS and United Way, and how we're going to work together. And in that, we did have that workforce. But a lot of those things were, that are in our charter for the council are way over and above what volunteers can do. Like, we can't go into these centers and find out if they're compliant.
And so what, just for the interest of moving us forward a little bit, are there other, I want to make sure that we got an answer, at least a sum, around who's negotiating that master agreement. Can you help us through, like, what are the remaining ones we want to get an answer to?
The third one, I guess, which is an important question regarding the Workforce Council being changed to a working group. And as I stated, I'll repeat it again, and if you'd like to comment on this, was in December, it was voted by the board and presented in the January minutes that it was now changed to a working group.
Is there somebody who has some context on that, Ms. Bolton?
Yes, please. When, and when all this was done, when the first master agreement, Preschool Promise occurred, there was great tremendous effort, both financially, politically, sociologically, a lot of time put together to create the Preschool Promise Master Agreement. Master Agreement is between or among, if you will, the trusted entity, which is United Way, and of course CPS, and the Preschool Promise Group. Part of the organizational structure of the preschool arrangement and master agreement, I think that was the way to approach it, was this separate, to Carolyn's point of view, this separate entity that reported directly to the school board. It was not reporting to the preschool Board of Managers, in part because one of the things that the CFT wanted to make sure happened was that CFT and Cincinnati's own educational experts actually had some say in how these different things were going to be evaluated, performed, and developed. So it's always had that. I think the workforce development, correct me if I'm wrong, Laura, has had two or three charters that have passed.
At least.
And by the, at least that, because as it was evolving, okay. The best thing that I can say is that on, in September, Laura rightfully sent a memo to the Finance Committee, and we'll do the whole title, and it really was a Preschool Workforce Development Council has been charged with a number of broad responsibilities, which include, and then she goes through all the ones that are included. And then it describes it, and then it wants to seek clarification. That's in September. At the same time then, or a little bit later, we got a request from Vera Brooks about this confusion as to how to monitor, how, what's the role, and what have you. So administration put forward a request about the Workforce Development Committee. Then, at the committee, or Vera Brooks, I'm not sure, the committee or the administration, sent a request to the internal auditor person to do a comparison as to what's being done and what was it supposed to be. And I have some of these here, and I'll be happy to share that.
I shared that, I shared.
Okay, good. So that's what was happening. So there's been this evolution. And then, after we got the internal auditor's presentation, we got Laura's second presentation, and we got Vera's presentation, it was determined and suggested by the administration, not by us, but it was brought to us, and that we would, this group, this council, would evolve into a working group to kind of rediscover what it was they were supposed to be doing. I think that's where we are. And Vera Brooks knows this better than anybody. And to get more specific with her for this, I think we have to wait for her to return. But I'm happy to share at least these documents.
Yes, please.
That'd be great.
And if no one else has another question, I do have one more. This is regarding a representative for the Preschool Promise Board. If you could just discuss that really quick.
A school board member does not sit on the Preschool Promise Board. It sits, it sends several representatives.
Yes, and I was going to address that to President Lindy.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. I mean, Mrs. Weinberg and I talked, she'd asked earlier about a board member from the CPS Board who would liaise with the board for Preschool Promise to do things like set a date for a joint meeting. I did have a conversation with Dr. Owens. Vice President Jones is very good about introducing me to him. And he suggested, and I agree, that that remain the president of each board. And that role really is limited to when will we have a meeting together, and then we all have the meeting together. So that's, we will, my understanding is that, I think that meeting is already calendared. But that's the limit of that, and then it would be the president of each of the boards. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you, President Lindy, and thank you, Board Member Bolton. I just wanted to make sure that he had addressed that and added some information. And I will, I guess, wait to get back further information from Vera. Is that what we stated?
I think that's right, yeah.
Thank you.
And so...
I might also suggest that maybe our staff has some historical information. I know I have some in my old files about how all this came about, which might be helpful. So I'll see what I can pull up, and the board staff may also have files on that.
Thank you.
Wonderful, so moving through as items one and two, I think we're going to have a motion from Mr. Morosky about a committee, if you could share that with us, please. I also want to just check from a procedural standpoint, two things are true. One is, we did say at the committee of the whole that we would address this this evening. The other thing is, neither I nor any other board member asked for it to be on Board Matters tonight. So I don't know if we need to vote on a waiver to change, like, to add an item to our Board Matters discussion here. I don't feel an independent need to do that. I just want to make 100% sure that we're following our policies and procedures appropriately. Do we need to have a waiver to have a motion on the creation of a new committee? Dan is making his way to let us know what the rules are.
You certainly can talk about it. It's a regular board meeting, so there's nothing improper about bringing up a new subject. To be, out of an abundance of caution, to be consistent with your own rules, I would do a motion to add that to the Board Matters section of your agenda.
Okay, so I make a motion that we add to the Board Matters section for tonight, a discussion of a potential new committee. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Any discussion about the motion just to add this to the agenda, not to create the committee or not to create the committee? Ms. Bolton?
Can I ask the motion maker to revise the motion?
Can you say more?
Yeah, I would like you to revise it. We're not creating a new committee. We are creating an ad hoc committee for a specific purpose, as per our protocol.
So revised, I think that's great. Not a standing committee, to be distinguished.
Oh, God, no.
Yep, yep.
Or sitting committee is the way we're going to.
Yep, or sleeping, depending on how long our meeting goes tonight. Okay, so we have a motion, I think, do we have a second? Had a second from Vice President Jones. Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes, so we'll turn it over to Mr. Morosky. And because we've talked about this a bunch already, I think we should make a motion for a specific idea, seconded. We'll give a chance to have some discussion. I want to limit discussion to everybody gets a chance to speak. And if they want to then respond to something someone said, I think that's appropriate. What I don't want to do is go back and forth all night long. It's okay if people disagree, but I want us to move forward with some clarity. So would you make the motion, Mr. Morosky?
Yep.
I move, I move that this board creates an ad hoc committee to work with the administration and the community to reevaluate the district's attendance boundary lines.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Jones. So now we have discussion. Ms. Bolton?
My point of discussion would be, I think the motion is great, and I would like to make sure that within the motion, it is stated that we are talking about attendance boundaries for our elementary schools. This does not pertain to high schools of choice or any of that stuff because they don't have those boundaries. So this is attendance boundaries for those schools that are our elementary schools. And that could be the magnet schools, it could be also our neighborhood schools. But it has to just be the PK six, because that's where the attendance boundaries are. And that way, you're not going to get mission creep into something bigger than that. That's big enough.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Other discussion? I'll go. I'd like to say I think this is not the thing we should be doing right now. The reason I say that, a couple of reasons. One is, I think we are all working on strengthening our distinctions between governance and management. And I think I would define governance to mean focusing with the administration on a small number, three to five, the most important outcomes for the district that have to do with outcomes for children. And then monitoring the administration to check whether or not we are on track to those outcomes. This feels like really important work. I'm not saying the work is not important, but I'm saying it's work that belongs with the administration, not with a board committee. That's my first argument. You don't have to agree with me, but I wanted to let you know why I'm going to vote against it. Second, it's not one of our top four priorities. We sat here and agreed as a board, we voted on it, what are the four most important things we need to be focused on? This was not one of them. We haven't finished the budget. We haven't finished aligning with the superintendent on what her outcomes are. We haven't finished the transportation presentation. And we haven't started yet our governance training, though we are working very hard to get a first date on the calendar. So I would submit that we need to win on all of those things first before taking on some new body of work. And so those are the two reasons why I'm going to vote against it, but I also will support wherever the majority of the board is. Other discussion? Vice President Jones?
Just a really quick, Ms. Bolton clarified her understanding about this, and she said it's primarily focused on the attendance boundaries for elementary schools. However, the initial stages of these discussions, when the board was having them quite a while ago, we were talking about the entire district because I remember us clearly talking about quadrants, quadrants and high schools of choice and all that. So for me, the confusion is, how do we get from, how did we get from point A to point B? And not that I'm expecting an answer, but it lends to some of the confusion that I think has just surfaced, and, you know, what goes around comes around. I mean, the conversations have evolved. I do agree, and I'm going to say this again, that this was a high priority strategic planning effort under the growth plan. It was, and I remember us beginning to have that dialogue. I don't know where it stopped, why it stopped, I don't know. But once it stopped, then I think we needed to take a time, take time to reshift. That's where I am right now, is that any effort that we do regarding boundaries, we have to reshift. I agree 100% with President Lindy that that administration needs to really look at the historical context of this planning initiative, and then bring us up to date with where we are. I think it's important to get, Ms. Bolton has a very, she has a perspective on it. And I think she has the historical knowledge on it because I believe you were involved in the original committee. I could be wrong, I don't remember that. But she was involved in that. I just think we need to take some time and get caught up, and then come to a point where we can, as a fully informed board, figure out how we move forward. The other piece is, and then I'll be quiet, is, is around understanding this as a priority. And I need some understanding help with, if people are feeling like this is high priority, why? Maybe that helps us think more about how we move forward with it. Is it that much of a priority? Can we wait? What's the need? Where, you know, where are we with that? So that's...
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Did you have another thought?
No.
Dr. Moffett, do you want to go?
So I was at the policy meeting, and I do not have the historical context. I was part of the Strategic Planning Committee. But I do not understand why there is a preference to wait, except for the fact that it doesn't fit within those four goals. It is clearly something to me, when we had a discussion regarding the enrollment of, this is how this came out, it was about the enrollment of the preschool and the high schools in those policies, 5113 and 5113.01 and 03. And then we also talked about 5120. It became an equity issue to me. And so I think that everything, I don't think that we can close our equity policy when we have potentially policies that are inequitable. I don't think that we can say that, hey, we're done with equity and that's it. We've made the revision when there are still questions within the community about, and there were, we got an email after the meeting, that people are still concerned about the boundaries potentially being inequitable. And so I think it's always, this all ties together. And I am a little concerned with the desire to not walk in shoe gum at the same time, and that we cannot multitask as a board and do things that clearly intertwine with other things, and really ultimately working in tandem with the superintendent. We do have a new administration. This is work that I think the historical context can help her as well. But it's something that the community is very, very interested in. It hasn't been discussed, let alone revised, in decades. And so I think it just ties into the work that we do. And it doesn't have to be aggressive. It can be definitely something that we do slowly in bringing on a new superintendent. But to put it on the back burner, it's already been placed on the back burner. So I just don't see the reasoning for waiting. However, having said that, I'm open to waiting, if that's what you all think deems is the best interest with the historical context that you have. But I just, and I'm not saying that you said anything... But I just, and I'm not saying that you said anything in particular, I'm just saying, I think that, that it came up, it was very, very pertinent at the time. To me, it tied into the equity policy, which I think is a working, to be a working policy. You asked the question about why, so that.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Is there anybody who's not spoken yet who wants to share something under discussion on the motion? Mr. Craig?
So I think, you know, for me, there's a couple of questions that I think can be easily answered or easily clarified in this. And then it's, you know, kind of the first point, which is, the goal of the ad hoc committee at the end of the day is, is to provide some type of recommendation. And so if there's a timeframe or some other kind of expectation with regard to that, that I think may make this make more sense to, to some, or may make this make more sense to, to me at least. Not specifically saying you have to have a decision as to what the timeframe is, like right now, but this idea of that, is this supposed to be something that is ongoing over the next year to produce a recommendation, versus that it's something that we were expected to do three months, six months, nine months, that kind of deal? And I think the other part to this for me that would be, that I am actually very helpful, thought was very helpful in the discussion, is the narrowed focus, because I think when we were discussing it at the committee whole, and we've had discussions in the past about it, it was still so vague as to what it specifically would do. So I do appreciate providing some of that clarity from Ms. Bolton and Board Member Morosky, and providing that. So I think maybe that just added clarification as to the expectations of the timeframe around the ad hoc committee, might provide some guidance, because while it is not in, directly in the four priorities that we set for the next three months, well, now it's like a month and a half, two months, I think if this is a longer term or a little bit extended period of time goal, then it would still fit into those priorities as to our overarching things that we as a board review, look over, and guide. I just, I haven't heard any discussion as to what those expectations were.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Before we give any second rounds, I think we, Mrs. Weinberg, is there anything you wanted to say? We're good? So then, I'm going to time people to have like a, like a minute or less on this, if you go a second time, because it wants to move us forward. So Ms. Bolton, you got one minute.
Sure, I love it. In answer to what the Vice President was talking about, we did have a, in the strategic plan, and we are concluding the strategic plan in less than two months, it's over. And we're obviously going to take some sort of a view of what we finished and what we didn't. So this was a significant portion of this almost finished strategic plan. And it was broader, wider. It fell to the finance growth folks, because that's where it got assigned as a result of the strategic plan. When it was much broader, bigger, whether it was a Meridian plan or Meridian proposal, because nobody wanted to call it a plan, because it wasn't yet a plan, we indeed did what you've just all asked everybody to do, which is narrow this. This is hard work. We're not going to saddle an outgoing superintendent or an incoming superintendent with, guess what? Go draw all the boundary lines and make everybody upset. But what we do have to find out is evaluate that, because these enrollment, this enrollment goes across virtually three, if not four, of the four priorities anyway, and goes through more than one committee.
I'm pushing, I appreciate that. I know it's more, less time than everybody wants. We have a couple other really important things we're going to do this evening. We're going to, Ms. Jones gets one minute, Mike gets a minute, and we're going to vote.
There, there is no question that it is an equity issue. It is an equity issue. And we, we knew that going into the planning of the strategic plan. I, I, I'm not suggesting that we put it off. For me, it's more about, you know, we, we talk philosophy, but for me, it's more about process. What's the best way to get the work done? And Ms. Bolton just says something which made perfect sense to me, and that is, the work could go in any one of these committees. The, the issue that I had with it is that, you know, I just happened to be looking in policies minutes and all of that, and I saw where they were doing this work. And I started saying, how did it end up in policy? Well, it ended up in policy because the philosophy at that time had more to do with the perception around enrollments. That's what I think, that's what I gaged from it. And that's really, it's bigger than enrollment. So policy could have a piece in it, and so could finance and everybody, you know, all the other committees. But for me, it is about establishing a process, be that with ad hoc or full board, in the same way that transportation, I don't know. But it, it is, because I think we agree on philosophy.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Mr. Morosky, one minute.
I just want to amend the motion, because I accept my colleague, Ms. Bolton's friendly amendment. So the amended motion would be to move to create an ad hoc committee to work with administration and the community to reevaluate attendance boundary lines for elementary schools.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Okay, so we have had a motion, we've had a second, we've had discussion, everybody's had a chance to share and respond. We're going to take a vote. Ms. Wagner, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Can you reread the most?
Absolutely. I move to create, that we create an ad hoc committee to work with administration and the community to reevaluate the attendance boundary lines for elementary schools.
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
No. Motion carries. Okay, so we'll need to figure out, folks who are on that committee, would very much like to move forward with the rest and figure out who's on that committee at a future point in mutually agreeable way. And I think we'll move then to a very important item on our agenda this evening, which is a resolution thanking our interim superintendent, Tiana Amat, for her service to Cincinnati Public Schools.
Are the flowers still alive?
You all, you all joke.
That was Brandon's joke. I stole Brandon's joke, I apologize.
Listen, I think, I think, I think that this is, this is very, 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 and so we have a resolution we would like to read aloud. And this is worth some real airtime. I'm going to ask Mr. Craig to start us off, and then we'll hear from different board members as we go through. Thank you, Mr. Craig.
Whereas Cincinnati Public Schools interim superintendent, Tiana Amat, in the Board of Education, has mutually agreed to a resignation date of May 1st, 2022, and?
Whereas Ms. Amat has been a champion of Cincinnati Public Schools for two decades, since she began her career in Cincinnati at Rockdale Academy in 2002, and?
Whereas Ms. Amat served as principal of Hyde Park School for five years, beginning in 2012. In this capacity, Ms. Amat worked with parents, staff, and community partners to revive a neighborhood school and obtained the designation as the top-ranked elementary school in Ohio in 2014. Hyde Park School has been a top-10 school in several subsequent, subsequent years. In addition, Ms. Amat served as a mentor for staff, supporting the careers of members of her team who went on to serve as principal or manager within the district.
And whereas Ms. Amat was promoted to CPS's administration, serving as deputy superintendent in 2017. In this role, Ms. Amat was responsible for supervising all schools, worked with key community partners, including the University of Cincinnati, Thrive, Children's Hospital, and the Business Advisory Committee. Through this work, Ms. Amat was critical in helping to create career pathways for CPS students. Ms. Amat was also an advocate for the CPS three-year strategy, including upgrading curriculum to ensure best-in-class course materials, promoting equity and anti-racism, as well as learning anytime, anywhere. Ms. Amat is a passionate advocate for the importance of first-grade reading and the positive impact early literacy has on lifelong learning, and?
Whereas the Board of Education appointed Ms. Amat as interim superintendent in 2021. During her tenure in this role, Ms. Amat has served with joy and focus on students and ensured the district continued to make progress on its goals, as well as graciously assisted with transition.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education thanks Ms. Amat for her service to the CPS community, and wishes her success in her future endeavors. Cincinnati Board of Education.
I'd like to introduce this motion as written. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Vice President Jones. For discussion, I want to give board members a chance to share something if they'd like, and I'd like to go first, which is that I have deeply appreciated working with interim superintendent Amat. And I wanted to say, I think, three things in particular that I have appreciated about working with her. The first is, there is nobody who has a stronger commitment to children, and I'm very, very, very grateful that you've brought that to our district for your tenure here. Second, it is so nice to work with an interim superintendent who will share her opinion about issues. And I think that it is, it is great to have someone who looks at a very complicated situation with no clear right answer, and to, and to have an opinion about what the right way to move forward is with rationale for it. I really appreciate it. And the third I would mention is joy. I think you are someone who brings joy to workplaces, and I think that is important, particularly in dark times. So Cincinnati Works is lucky to have you, and I want to say thank you very much for your contributions here. Is there anybody else who would like to share something with Tiana? Mr. Morosky?
You were one of the first administrators that I worked with when I first got here and didn't know what I was doing, questionable whether or not I still do, but I, and I've said this to you before, but one of the things I've always admired about you is your activist heart for the work and for our students, that there are very concerted efforts against on every level of government and in the community, and you get that. And that really, that has been very meaningful, and it's been great to watch and to work with you. I'm just really excited that, I hope you are too, and I hope to keep working with you in your new role. So, congrats on that, and thanks so much for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Mrs. Weinberg?
I will be brief. Ms. Amat, I just want to thank you for everything that you have done, not only for my teaching career and everything else, but I just want to kind of end with just three letters, BGM, and you know what that means. If you don't, I'll tell you later. But you are amazing, you have a crown, and you will continue to shine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weinberg. Mr. Craig?
So it's been awesome getting to know you, and over these last few months, I know it's, it's been short, but it will not end today, I'm guaranteeing that. But I think the most amazing part is something Ben mentioned, which is that there's always been joy everywhere I see you at. And so my first time getting this chance to meet you and see you was during the, the summer block parties, and I saw somebody who was having a ton of fun doing, just spending time with the community, spending time with everybody, making sure that every person that came through there had a good time with her. And that's what, that just shows your passion for the job, and shows your passion for kids, shows your passion for the city. And the fact that you moved into my old neighborhood doesn't make that any less true. But I, I wish you all the success in the world. I think you are a great leader, a great person, and we truly will, will miss you here.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Ms. Jones?
Yes, Tiana Superintendent, indeed, coupled with a little bit, and I say that from my heart, because I, I know that you're a person who likes fun, you know, I, I've seen you at some of the school events, and you really get into that moment, and you come off of this whole thing about being the superintendent, and you go where the people are and the kids. And you have a big smile, and always bright eyes, and I've never heard one negative thing out of you, not one. And I appreciate that. And hopefully, you'll stick around and continue to serve kids, and you've never met, you've never had, been confronted with a challenge that I don't think that you did your best to tackle head-on. So I really appreciate that in you, and see you around.
Dr. Moffett?
Ms. Amat, I, I enjoyed sitting here next to you these past few months, but really getting to know you for the past few years. We've met each other under your predecessor, Laura Mitchell, and when she introduced me to you and said that I should talk to you about an issue that I brought to you, you were authentic, you were genuine, and you were just real. And I really resonated with you from that time on. I know, I think it's so easy to see the light in people, it's so easy to see that shine and that crown that real queens wear. And so I've seen yours, and you will continue to shine no matter where you are. I am so honored to know you, so honored to call you my friend, and I'm so proud of you. So thank you so much for all that you've done for our district, for our staff, for our students, and for continuing to be a role model of what true leaders embody.
Okay, so we have, hello? Did you get a chance to go already? No, so go, Ms. Bolton, let's hear it.
I'm over here. Yeah, there you go. How do I say it? I'm really glad you're staying in Cincinnati, at least for this time being, and you have fabulous opportunity to keep serving and, and helping and leading. I think that's great. City needs you, we need you. I've enjoyed greatly our work together on Hyde Park, because people don't believe it now, but that was a controversial decision. We actually had a board that didn't want to reopen Hyde Park, and we had to have the right principal there for that reopening. And the, the ties are still strong, as we saw throughout this last year. Thank you for that. Thank you also for the work on student achievement, but most particularly believing that curriculum is the secret weapon. I really appreciated that. And then, as a person that spent 36 years with teenagers, I love the fact that you like teenagers so much, and you have been so interested in making sure that they have a loud, true, vibrant voice in the district. And so my best to you, I think it's great, and I'm happy that you were here, and I'm very happy that you're staying in Cincinnati.
Okay, I don't think I missed anybody else, it's always possible. So we have a motion that has been properly introduced and seconded, we've had our discussion. Ms. Wagner, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. So thank you, interim superintendent Amat. Move. Okay, moving to item two on resolution. This is a resolution expressing opposition to Ohio House Bill 616. We've talked about this at the last two meetings a little bit, and I wanted to ask for us to, as swiftly as we can do it well, to?
We don't need. Is that what you're going to do?
Well, I was inclined to read it, I'm also thinking about the hour. Is there any board member who would like it to be read aloud? Okay, well then, we're going to introduce it as written. I'm just going to, well, so, so, so I'd like to introduce a resolution expressing opposition to House Bill 616. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, I would just like to, to share with the public or any media who's watching, the full text of the resolution is available. And I'd like to thank my board member colleagues for moving this forward so swiftly. Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy? President Lindy?
Yes. Shifting gears, we have a resolution from the Policy Committee. I'm going to ask Mike to introduce this one.
We have a resolution to request a waiver for alcohol use at Kilgore Elementary School by the Kilgore Parents and Teacher Association. I present the resolution as written. That's recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffitt?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. We have a next, we're on resolution number four, also going to be introduced by Mr. Marowski.
I'd like to present a resolution amending board policy 3170, substance abuse. I present the resolution as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffitt?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Excuse me, indulge me for a second. I think, for a minute, I want to give the 616 thing just a second of airtime, because I think we're choosing to do this because we believe in certain things on the school board, and because we are trying to put our district in line with our values. I think some things that we believe is that in order for us to move student outcomes forward, kids need to feel like schools are welcoming places, and they need to be challenged to learn not just about themselves, but also about people who are different from who they are. And that House Bill 616 makes both of those things harder for us to do. I think it makes it harder for us to do that for kids and families who are members of the LGBTQ community, and I think it makes it harder to do that for members of our community who are part of the African-American community. But I just want to say that I'm proud to work here because of our equity policy and our anti-racism policies, and I want to thank you all for your votes tonight to help pass the resolution against that House bill. So with that, I think we'll keep going, and I believe the next one here is number six from Ms. Bolden.
Yes.
No, 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 number five.
Number five from Mr. Marowski?
Yep.
This is part two of the last one. A resolution rescinding board policy 4170, substance abuse. Because it was duplicative, I present the resolution as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffitt?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
Now, we will try number six from Ms. Bolton.
Yes. A resolution rescinding board policy 3161, unrequested leaves of absence.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffitt?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. From Ms. Bolton again, but this on number seven.
A resolution rescinding board policy 4161, unrequested leaves of absence.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffitt?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Item eight, from Dr. Moffitt.
I submit a resolution amending board policy 8600.02, transportation of students. I submit it as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have --
Ms. Bolden?
This is a monumental policy shift, and it is current, it is contemporary, it's a great talk about values and talk about direction. This is a very important policy, and I appreciate all the work that went in it and the administration that participated greatly in it, and especially their tolerance for the multiple times it's been addressed. But it's a huge policy, and I know it's impacted, and I know that the great work that the administration's done in transportation has impacted the quality of this policy.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bolden.
I have a question.
Yep.
Was this policy, I think everybody knows now that I'm struggling with this, and hopefully I won't struggle after this question, but was this policy aligned with what the information, the information that was presented in the transportation options, so it was aligned with that, so?
Some of the, there was a lot of substantive items that were changed. A number of them were pretty specific in light of what we heard tonight, i.e., like time it would take kids to get to school, like an ideal time it would take to get kids to school, or start time, or mileage, so like one mile, for example. But yes, and it actually, now that I'm remembering it, the conversation, this first got on the agenda when President Lindy was still on policy, when everything kind of went off the rails, pun intended, I guess, or poorly intended with transportation last year. So, yeah. And I think administration, I'm not, I would never even dream of putting you all on the spot, but I think they would agree. They were at the table with it as it was sort of developed, so.
I would add that it's, that policy sets the standard, sets the vision, sets the direction, and indeed what the administration does aligns to the board policy. That's the teamwork. But in the growing period of all three of the transportation policies, we were at the height, if you will, in the development of this new transportation view that is in keeping with, in keeping with Vision Zero, in keeping with the safe routes to school, is in keeping with being able to provide the kind of transportation our families deserve. So I think it was a great example of the board doing its work and the administration doing their work, and somehow, is it you meet in the middle or you meet somewhere? I think it's great.
Philosophy versus process, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. We'll have a vote then. Ms. Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffitt?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. So as we get to item nine, I'd like to point out that there's no resolution that's being presented for a vote this evening as it relates to a tax levy. This is listed as a first reading. We're going to hear from Ms. Bolden, because the recommendation is coming from the Finance Committee, but I think this is a good chance for people to ask questions and share what questions or concerns that they have on their mind as we chart a path for the next couple of weeks and months.
And I'm certainly going to tap into the true expert, and that's our treasurer. I would start with saying that when we passed the five-year forecast, I guess in October or whenever that was, I can never remember, November, this was mentioned as needing to happen. We've known since the last time it was renewed, it needed to happen. And when the first time it was renewed, we knew that we were going to have to be working through this. But at any rate, from the November five-year forecast, the previous Finance Committee and the current Finance Committee have had at least three, maybe even four times or tries at the discussion of the levy, and had, as we always do, for board, the presentation by our treasurer about all the different options, the need for the levy financially and to continue our program, and more particularly, the options, only recently, in the last several years, have we talked about having different ways of approaching the levy. And we have, in all the finance minutes, there's at least two months prior to this past one, where indeed those options were laid out, and the options were clear from a standpoint, we could do what we've been doing and have it as it once was on a five-year renewal, or we could have a continuing levy, and, or we could have it be extended to 10 years. So there's even some other sorts of organizations that might suggest other manners, but those are the three options that best suited our needs. And even though the treasurer always likes to try to get us to go continuing, because she wants that financial stability, the finance team held firm from her pressure and went instead with a 10-year at the current renewal. And that 10-year, in part, was made more attractive because it gives you some more financial stability in planning. And the other reason is, in the last 15 years, the only levy that has failed, and there's not a lot of urban districts that can say that, was a continuing levy. It failed. And it failed in part because it was different, and it, and didn't give the voters enough of a chance to hold us accountable, and because the board was not united in its vote. So it had a number of things going. So the Finance Committee and its infinite wisdom finally hoped that we'd be able to run the buses on time and safely, and that we'd have a successful outgoing superintendent and a successful incoming superintendent, and be able to pass this renewal. So we suggested and recommended that it be a 10-year renewal for 51.5 million that is desperately needed, and I'll turn it over to the treasurer, if I could, Mr. Chair, to make the case more broadly, if she, or deeply, if she wants.
Thanks, Ms. Bolden. Ms. Wagner?
Certainly, thank you. So to answer one question that was answered, or was asked earlier, sorry, it's been a long day. The last time, the last issue that we put on the ballot was a $65 million renewal, was a five-year renewal, it was the fourth renewal, and we switched it to a 10-year, and it passed at a 71.8% approval rate, which is even better than our last renewal of the $48 million operation levy that was a 69% approval rate. So, what year was that? That was just 2020. That was the first renewal of the $48 million, the one with the preschool $15 million set aside. That was the first renewal of that five-year levy, and then this one's coming up. The one that we're getting ready to do in November will be the third renewal of the original one that went in, enacted in 2008. So my recommendation to go longer term is, we were getting to the point where, because we have three renewing levies, they're on the ballot three out of every four years. And so it's becoming levy fatigue for our voters, because they don't really understand that a renewal is not new money, and that it was just one on top of another. And so when we go to 10 years, it gives us a lot more space, and it makes it easier to forecast and plan for.
So I --
I'm sorry, the mileage is set by the county auditor, and renewals don't increase in value except for new construction, so the 51 and a half million is what we're stuck with unless we wanted to do a substitute levy, but.
I think, given the hour, and given the fact that we're not going to vote on this tonight, my proposal would be, we collect any questions that people would like to learn more about, and I appreciate the timeline clarification earlier, so that we really have, not that we would wait until the very last minute, but we, if we needed to, we could, the thing that is on here is a first reading, we could do in late July and still have this on the, and I'm not suggesting we do that, but there's no reason why a vote on this at the next meeting or in a month would still give us plenty of time. I'd like to share a couple of questions that I'm thinking about, that I would love to hear more about, and again, I'm not asking for this tonight, but I think at the next meeting. I think this is a time in the Cincinnati and the country where I think people are feeling the effects of inflation, that people are feeling the effects of inflation. We also have received a significant amount of federal funding through all the different asset grants, and I think a reasonable person could ask, why do we need the same amount of money for 10 full years when we've already gotten the additional federal support and families and taxpayers are feeling all of the pressures from inflation? I'm not saying that's a reason not to do it, but I think we should have an answer. And actually, I think we do have an answer. I think what I want to do is create some public airtime for it, so we could say, you know, were we to ask for less, for example, here's what that would mean. Were we to ask for the same amount, here's what that would mean. Were we to ask for it for three years or five years instead of 10 years, here's what that would mean. But I think, I think there are reasons why a reasonable person could say, why aren't you asking for less right now? And I'd like us to have a really good answer for what that is. And I want to be clear that I am ready to get on board to support this. I just want to make sure we've answered, I think, some reasonable questions in public first, and that's what's on my mind. Yep. Ms. Jones?
Just, I just wanted to check to see if we are able to do a public presentation on this. I'm okay with the first reading. If we had to vote on it tonight, I would not vote. But I think, I believe it's a statute that we have to do a public presentation on this, right?
I don't think you have to, no.
Okay.
But I'm happy to.
I think it's good community, a good community message to do a presentation on this, and also to fully inform the board of the scenarios. Ms. Bolton said it was in the minutes. I looked in the minutes, and I, maybe I overlooked it, but that's very possible, but I didn't see it in the level of detail that I was looking for. So a public presentation on it at the time of the, when it comes on the agenda again.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Any other questions or comments? I think our current plan is we'll have a presentation on this to answer these questions. Does anybody want to log any other questions? Dr. Moffitt?
I'm just a little concerned about, I think that, you know, this is, I just am afraid of the timing to be asking for 10 years. I do think, I agree with you, President Lindy, people are really stretched right now, and it sounds like it's advantageous for us, but not necessarily the community, to stretch it so we don't have to come back. But I remember these discussions years, a few years ago, and many people shared that they didn't realize that it was 10 years, and it sounded sneaky. So I do think engagement with the community, and also to explain clearly what we've done with the federal money, and so that they can understand it in lay terms, and why we need this right now. I think we need to garner trust with the community, and this may not be the way to go at the moment. I'm happy to support a levy, because I know we need it, but I just don't, I want to make sure that it's something that can be sustainable and pass.
Other board members who haven't spoken yet? Mrs. Weinberg?
I would just say that I'm in agreeance with having a presentation made so that, one, we can kind of know all of the information presented, and have a background, and be able to make a educated decision regarding, we know that the tax levy is important.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I think a presentation's a great idea, and I would suggest that it indeed happen and be a high priority the next time we meet, because any delay is not going to be really good for us from a standpoint that we are putting out to the public our reasonable concerns. I think we need to answer, or have the treasurer answer any of those concerns for us at the very next meeting, and then would hope that there would.
Yes, I can. It's all set. We will have seven bells at all of our high schools. We have worked with all of our principals, and we are staffed to have a seven-bell schedule.
Thank you. And just in the spirit of it, part of this was passed, not only in the name of equity, but also the hope that we would provide the staffing and the courses for students that a seven-period day requires. And I think some had six and some had eight, or a couple had eight, and now everybody has at least seven academic schedules, academic bells.
Yes.
Teaching bells. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Wagner, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
I recuse on item F under certificated personnel, and yes, on everything else.
Dr. Moffitt?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. We have a motion to adopt the report of the treasurer.
I'm moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Treasurer Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffitt?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Thank you, Treasurer Wagner. Do we have any inquiries or updates? Yes, Ms. Bolton?
I've had some inquiries directed to me about the changes in some of the testing that I know it's gone through the testing committee and it's gone to EIP. And the question I just wanted to ask about and follow up on is the change regarding semester exams, is that uniform across the district, or will schools have the option to ask for exceptions?
At this time, the last discussion for EIP was waiting for Ms. Wright to come in because it's going to be during her time here to make that decision. It is a committee that's in place with administration and teachers. So they are continuing to look at the procedures.
Great, thank you.
Any other inquiries or updates? Mrs. Weinberg, and then Mr. Morosky.
I just have two questions. First, I don't know if this is the place to ask this question, but regarding something from the Health and Safety Committee, is it possible to get an update or provide some information on the MOU regarding the SROs? I know that there was a discussion. You said you were going to do it.
I got one, but did you, you all should have gotten it.
No, I didn't.
Remember, it was signed at the committee.
Right, and I didn't get it.
Okay. I just looked at it.
So can I, can I have that then?
Yes.
Not be shared? And I had an update, but I'm going to save that for the next meeting. How about that?
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Mr. Morosky?
So kind of an inquiry, I don't think it rises to assignment. I talked to General Counsel Hoang about it. So I got a number of inquiries in the community about folks interested in Cincinnati Public Schools entering, and like particularly after tonight of our resolution in opposition to House Bill 616, having an entry in the pride parade, the school district itself. And I know we've gone to like different events, we've had presences, and I don't know if there's past president for that, but I just wanted to pass along that there were employees that were interested in, they're fired up about CPS, they knew we were going to take a stand tonight and reached out to me. So I don't know if this is an assignment or what I'm doing, but I, I wanted to make it known that whoever those powers are, Krista, your office, like I want to look cool looking, I just wanted to pass that along, because I know a lot of people are excited about what CPS is doing and thought it would be really cool if we had a presence in the pride parade this year.
Thank you very much. Other inquiries, updates, or assignments?
Assignments?
Mr. Morosky?
I know, I'm so sorry. I normally don't.
Don't apologize to me.
Two, two, two. So the two, the two assignments that I have, one, I teed up last Wednesday, no surprise to anybody, I wanted to formally assign that somebody in administration get with Women Helping Women to now follow up on what was Friday's recommendation from Commissioner Dreehouse to proliferate their programming in our schools. Of course, this is at no cost to us, they come with the money, so just assign, you know, reach out to Women Helping Women. And then lastly, and this is something I've been having conversations with folks in the community, board members, with city, and so I'm going to ask that there is some kind of turnaround on this maybe by our next meeting, if somebody could please look into, I was under the impression that this body approved a raise for crossing guards. And the city, some city leaders made a note to me, particularly after a car turned over in Clifton, that, you know, at 11 bucks an hour, maybe it can entice more folks, because we're about 40-some crossing guard short as it is, that maybe if it was 15 bucks an hour, it might entice some more. And I was like, oh, we did that. I could be wrong. And if that's the case, then I'm wrong. But I, I've talked to other board members that remember agreeing to do this too. The city manager made it clear that if there was a memo from the district saying, yeah, we approve it, then they'll just make the change. But I know it's not in the budget, and I realize that. But if it is something that we did approve, I guess that's my assignment, is if somebody could help us figure that out, then I think we need to try to make it happen. So I don't, whoever can do that, I think, would be great. And if it can't happen until next year, it's unfortunate, but I, I remember, I thought I remembered us agreeing to do it a couple of years ago even. So we, and if we didn't, we didn't, and then we can advocate, you know, advocate for it for next year.
Ms. Amad or Ms. Wagner, do you want to comment on that?
We did the research, missed the bell, and then we ran the numbers. So the next step was to bring the numbers to the full board because there is an increase, I can't remember, was it about $100,000 increase?
It's $100,000 based on what we're spending right now, but budget to budget, it's, or...
My proposal then?
Quite a bit of money.
Treasurer, it's a great thing to talk about as we continue to move the budget forward, and like, so good to know it hasn't happened and could choose to be a priority, but we could, we could talk about that in the context of budget.
Yeah, and then also, I don't want the piece to get lost about if we can, if somebody, I don't know if it's board, office, or who it is, could, could help correct that record on that, on that vote that at least a couple of board members recall approving. I just, I want to make, because if we did approve a raise for the crossing guards, then that'll probably dictate what a pain in the butt I might end up being about this in the budget process.
We can have somebody search through the minutes.
Cool, thank you.
Okay. If that's it, then, just kidding. Ms. Bolton?
And I'll think of more if this keeps up, but I think what I'd like to have done is ask the transportation folks to indeed look through that athletic costs of, and runs and amounts of buses that our athletic department requires, rightfully so, and then again, ask if we know where the vacancies are for our crossing guards, because as we, as you have shared with us, there are 49 places that are not being manned or womaned based upon the crossing guard piece. So, but mostly, and then see about leasing buses, as you said, or buying buses, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Having no other business before us, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.